And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, god, and individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We are going to begin tonight with a public hearing related to the budget, and we will start out with a presentation from Dr. O'Shea related to the budget. He has some slides prepared and go over those, and then we will turn our attention to public comment based on the budget.
All right.
All right, take it away.
Thank you so much, and I'll just take a moment to share my screen and get us kicked off.
Oh.
All right.
Good.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, and thanks for joining us. I think the guests that have assembled with us are a reflection of the complexity of building a budget to support the activities for schools each and every year. I want to start by thanking the committee, the finance subcommittee, town officials, for helping us craft this recommendation, and a special thanks to Tom Mazza, who has compiled all the very, very detailed budget documents that are in your meeting packet and available online for the public as well. So, thank you, Tom. Several of our administrators are able to attend tonight, and I present this as an administrative team recommendation and one that represents the next stage in the budget development process. Last week, I started with the next steps, and tonight, I thought I would start with that as well. It began, the budget season kicked off, with the release of the governor's budget on January 24th. We are here tonight for a public hearing on the budget, and there'll be plenty of opportunities for good discussion involving the community and with the committee. Right now, the committee is set to vote on the FY25 budget next week, and will be an opportunity currently scheduled to go to the select board to present the FY25 budget. The select board will continue to, will receive its budget from the town manager and ultimately vote a budget on the 25th. And finally, ultimately, this is a decision of the residents of Long Meadow at the annual town meeting on May 14th. But I'd say, you know, as a, both a word of caution and both a, you know, a reassurance that this is a long, protracted discussion, that even after the committee votes the budget on February 13th, or whenever it does vote that budget, there are still plenty of decisions to be made. And, you know, the budget really continues to evolve. Revenue pictures become clearer, costs become clearer, and so there's plenty of variables, and we can talk about those at the end, but there's plenty of variables that continue to take shape long after the committee votes the budget. Most notably, you'll see that the state really doesn't get to a voted budget typically to the end of June. And so our hope is that as the budget makes its way through the legislature, and there's a reconciliation budget that ultimately makes its way to the governor, my hope is that it's a reflection of the voices of the entire Long Meadow community. I think this is one of those years where, frankly, it's important that we convey, as a community, as a committee, as administrators, that we convey our hopes and intentions to our legislators, who have been historically very supportive of public education, Rep. Ash and Senator Olivera. And so my hope is that we have an opportunity to convey to them some of the challenges that we're facing, and that there's an opportunity to see some positive increases in state aid, which is really what is making this budget particularly challenging. So, I'll begin by just highlighting our budgetary goals, and we went over these in more detail last week, and so I'll sort of, in the interest of time and making sure that we have plenty of time for discussion, I'll project those for you tonight, but there's certainly a lot of competing interests and competing needs in critical goals. I think our, the most important thing that we do is to sort of make sure that that budget is aligned with, it's developed and allocated in a way that's consistent with our goals and our mission as a school district. Ultimately, we need something that is cost-effective and sustainable, and we want to be obviously cognizant of the town's fiscal position as well. Being responsive to enrollment patterns, being responsive to our contractual obligations is critical as well. So tonight, again, starting with sort of the highest level summary of our FY25 proposed budget, you'll see that this budget, which was originally proposed on January 30th, had recommended a contribution from the town's general fund of $40,231,176. You'll notice in the column on the blue that tonight, we have to, we feel like it's part of our obligation to present a revised budget, which you'll note, it revises the budget downward, and it decreases the general fund request that is made through this presentation. There's about $167,000 difference between the proposed amount from January 30th and the amount that you see in blue in the fourth column over. The reason for that is since we last met on January 30th with this committee, we've been in conversations with town officials, the town manager, and the finance director, and they conveyed to us that the proposal that was submitted, recommended on January 30th would be very, very fiscally challenging to the town, to the point where they had asked us to bring to the committee a recommendation to increase our general fund request by no more than 3% over last year. So this is a, in fact, a revision downward from the request that was discussed at your meeting on January 30th. So it troubles me to bring this information forward, to report to the committee that this is a request that has been made by the town's finance director and the town manager. They're asking that we work inside of that 3% increase on the general fund from FY24. Again, it's about $167,000 downward revision from what was discussed last week. You'll note that the other, the special revenue row has not been adjusted. Special revenue refers to competitive and non-entitlement grants and other sources of revenue that comes directly to Long Meadow Public Schools. So this is a $1.1 million increase from the general fund potentially over FY24, which is a significant increase, particularly when you compare it to increases that the town has given us in past years, so we can take a look at that. So that's the highest level summary of the FY25 budget. Again, not to dive into too much detail, because we had an opportunity to discuss our alignment with the MTSS continuum, but our commitment to ensuring that there is universal, high-quality instruction at Tier One, and that it's driven by optimal class size. Our elementary, middle, and high principals place that very, very high on the list of their priorities, is making sure that we're protective of the class sizes that have always been part of the secret sauce that makes Long Meadow Public Schools great. And along with that, our commitment to universal design, ensuring that students have multiple opportunities to be engaged and to represent their learning and to express their learning. Tier Two, ensuring that we have appropriate interventions in place, both on the academic and the behavioral side. I think we've done great work building out supports on the academic side of that MTSS triangle. Increasingly, we're finding, we talk about competing needs that we're all facing, increasingly, we're seeing the importance of building out Tier Two interventions on the behavioral side, on that social-emotional side, on the mental health side. So that's really critical, that we have that full range, that full continuum of services, and that we work towards it as best possible. Tier Three, explicit, structured, intensive instruction for those learners that need it. And underlying all this, ensuring that we're informed in our practice by data, that we are monitoring student progress regularly, and that we're providing appropriate professional development for our educators. So, to step back, I wanted to throw this slide out again, as I called it last week, the cost of doing business, and I think it's a good shorthand way of describing the cost of doing business, the rising cost of doing business. And the foundation budget is what the state would say is the minimum amount that a community should spend to appropriately educate children in the district. So Long Meadow's foundation budget for FY25 is $34.2 million. That's what state would say ought to minimally be spent. We're very fortunate, very, very fortunate, that this is a community that goes beyond that minimum requirement. And, but, the reason I show it is to say that, you know, again, the cost of doing business has been increasing in recent years, and that's associated with transportation and utilities, and contracts, and supplies, and professional development, and on, and on, and on. And, you know, any household understands, anyone who's running a household understands that, anyone who understands, running a business certainly understands that as well. One trip to the grocery store, you understand what we're talking about. So that foundation budget has regularly been increasing. The main source of aid that the town of Long Meadow receives, and any town, is Chapter 70 aid. We've been fortunate, in recent years, that in Long Meadow and really across the state, there have been significant increases in Chapter 70 revenue that has been provided to districts, operating districts, really goes directly to the city or town, to the municipality. But, so we're fortunate that there have been some significant increases, but you'll see in FY25, the drop-off in Chapter 70 state aid across the state. That's a, that's a really, I can't understate the significance, the importance of all of us understanding this. I'd even go so far as to say that the increases we've seen in recent years really haven't kept pace with some of the increased operational costs, that a lot of the Chapter 70 increases have been, to put it succinctly, sort of gobbled up by rising operational costs. They've allowed us to make some modest investments in recent years, but not the type of investments, frankly, that I think were promised by the Student Opportunity Act that drives, that drove these increases in Chapter 70 aid. So, again, you know, I had an opportunity to trade some emails with Rep. Ash and Senator Olivera's office, and again, they've always been super supportive of education in western Massachusetts, but I think it's important that they understand the pressures and challenges that we're facing from, on the revenue side. And, you know, I would sort of invite all of us assembled here to be kind of tuned into that and hope that Chapter 7, the increase that we're expecting in Chapter 70 will increase. So, what we are looking at for next year on the far right is an increase in Chapter 70 aid of $81,690. That's, represents the minimum amount that an operating district can receive from the state. That's $30 per pupil, the minimum amount. And on a, you can imagine, on a $40 million budget, that amount does not go very far to help us absorb increased costs. Long Meadow is, you'll see that the town of Long Meadow receives somewhere in the neighborhood $7 million in Chapter 70 aid. That's on our $40 million budget, so that tells us that we're also, we're very reliant on the town's general fund. So Chapter 70 is significant, but we're also very, very reliant on the town's general fund. So, that's, that's a, I think this tells a really challenging story for us. It's an important source of state aid to the town of Long Meadow, and it shapes, you know, what we're able to do with our proposal here tonight. I'll stop there, well, actually, I'll run through it, I guess, before we... So, some additional information for you, this is, highlights our historic and projected enrollment trends, and you'll see that, you know, if you were to kind of draw a broad conclusion, you'll see that we've experienced some declines at every level, going back about 10 years or so. And it's important that we're responsive to those declines, because Chapter 70 aid is tied to overall enrollment. Just a quick by the way, Long Meadow was one of, there's 319 operating districts, Long Meadow was one of 212 districts across the state that got the minimum aid. So we're not alone in that, in the Chapter 70 cliff that we've sort of fallen off, we're not alone. Just a quick snapshot of enrollment as it's shaping up. I think the story this tells is you'll see that in the upper grades, we have cohorts of 230, 220 students. You'll see that the size of those cohorts generally decreases as we get to the lower grades. Now, it's fair to say that those cohorts sometimes increase over time, but I don't think we'll see, I don't think we'll get back to seeing Long Meadow High graduating 230, 240 students as it, as it historically has. I think we're, you know, it looks like we're going to be settling into that, more like that 200 range. Again, these are the types of things that, you know, our budget has to be responsive to, because our revenue is tied to these enrollment figures. So it's really important that we understand the Chapter 70 funding formula and have some great conversations with policymakers at the state level. So, the FY25 recommendation. So, the third column, again, is a, it's a, it revises downward. The proposal that was discussed on the 30th by about $167,000, I noted it with an asterisk that this reflects the town's parameters. This is what the finance director of the town and the town manager have conveyed to us. In fairness to the town, they're facing some significant pressures as well. I'd say that they conveyed to us that even if we were to come in at this number, that it would still leave a very significant shortfall for the town to close. And so we want to be mindful of that. You know, we have great partnerships across the town, and, you know, we want to be mindful of the town's fiscal position. But we can talk about sort of the implications of this and how it shakes out. So, this is a revised snapshot of the general fund increase that this budget recommendate, this budget proposal tonight recommends. You'll see that it comes in at a 3% increase on the town's general fund. In terms of percentage and real dollars, this is, this is one of the more ambitious requests that we have made to the town, but it revises downward. I believe, and Mr. Mazza can help me out, I believe last week, the increase to the general fund was in the 3.4%, range?
3.42.
3.42, thank you. So this brings that request down to the 3% level that the finance director has indicated would be something that is at least more manageable to the town. By funding source, so you'll see, again, we are highly reliant on the general fund. Other districts with different demographics might be more reliant on entitlement grants, but we are, you know, given our demographics, this is a sort of a more typical arrangement. The proposed revision would reduce the proposal by $167,572, and shortly, I'll sort of explain in broad strokes how we would arrive at that additional $167,000. A quick note here, one source of encouraging news is the increase in Circuit Breaker. Circuit Breaker stands as a program that reimburses districts for the cost of special ed placements in a prior fiscal year, so if there are extraordinary costs associated with a student's placement, that Circuit Breaker kicks in to provide some relief, but it's based on the situation in the prior fiscal year. So that's a, that's a bit of good news, that we're seeing that increase in Circuit Breaker aid. You'll see, this assumes a level amount of school choice applied to the FY25 budget. The school committee has yet to decide what our school choice levels will be in FY25, so that decision is in front of us. That's another variable that we need to be mindful of. I want to note, if I could, some of the grants that support our activities in Long Meadow Public Schools. When we think about grants, one of the simple ways to think about it is entitlement grants and grants that are more, that you have to chase down, that are competitive or need-based. And I'm really proud of how our staff works with town officials to chase down a significant amount of non-entitlement grants, and so I just wanted to offer apologies for the small font, but we will post this slide deck and make it available to families and staff as well. But, you know, these are, these are, when I say non-entitlement grants, this does not count the federal grants that essentially we're entitled to, to serve students on IEPs or Title II or Title, Title I grants, thank you. But, the Drug Free Communities grant supplies the town with $125,000 annually for prevention and intervention activities. Breaking news, that we talked about last week, is a new SEL grant that was secured by the efforts of the administrative team, with Nilda Irizarry being our principal author. Appreciate how hard she worked to chase that $93,000 grant down. It's going to provide some really critical supports in FY25. In FY23, Bridges Math was our curriculum director at the time, had secured funding to implement Bridges Math. We have a modest amount of money for Chronic to support Chronic Absenteeism, or to work to combat Chronic Absenteeism. Obviously, MSBA grants, they need to be, think of, thought of as grants. The Middle School Project, we talked last week with this committee about the roof at Center School, and so we're going to pursue an accelerated repair grant with the MSBA. MTSS Academies, Beth Nelson has been leading a team of educators through advanced math recovery training. That was funded by our participation in a math academy sponsored by DSE. Opioid Settlement Funds, we have educators and administrators that are working with town, the Board of Health, to chase down and to access opioid fund settlement grants, and so that's allowed for the installation of vape detectors. We have a $42,000 grant on hand for the installation of cameras and other security equipment. Mass Humanities, this is a cool project. We have a team of educators at our middle schools who are, who requested a grant from Mass Humanities to help 7th grade students study the experience of individuals who were enslaved in early Long Meadow. And so kudos to those educators who chased that down, and of course, leaf grants are an important source of support as well. So, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars here that only come to us through the hard work of educators and administrators. Our ears, our eyes are always open for these opportunities. If community members become aware of some opportunities, we'd love to hear about it. If it fits our goals and our mission, we'll chase it down as best we can. Okay. So, what I thought I'd do is just sort of a, I think, you know, we have a community that is thankfully very engaged in the budget development process, so I'll sort of try to work efficiently through the next few slides, but I'll describe some of the adjustments that were proposed and discussed last week, and then I'll move to what I would call Tier Two budget reductions. So in Tier One, you'll see in the top right, I think, you know, when you think about, you know, where we have some wiggle room, in many respects, we don't have much wiggle room in this budget. We have contractual obligations to the tune of $1.2 million. We have some important software and computer services that are needed for operational purposes. I think most folks know that IT is under the town, or excuse me, under the school umbrella, and so Director Antonio Pagan is here with us tonight, and he has identified some really important ways to promote efficiency through cybersecurity equipment, a cloud-based system for procurement, and some tools to manage maintenance practices. So, that's the 132. Utilities, we projected at 167, 275. Again, increases associated with the costs of heating, cooling, lighting, a school building. If you need to know more, Mr. Mazza's really gets excited talking about thermes and kilowatts and that kind of thing. So, transportation services, most districts are experiencing increases in this area. This really relates to the increased number of students that need to access transportation to get to a particular supportive placement in their, in their program. So those items on the top right, I'd say are the biggest drivers of the FY25 budget. I wanted to show the connection between some of the additions on the right and the reductions on the left. Most of what, you know, it's almost a little misleading to call this additions, because in fact, some of this is sort of reallocations. And so we have two special education teaching positions that, based on enrollments and student need, we're projecting will not be needed next year. I would say that this is, that doesn't represent a decrease in services, it really represents students moving through our K-12 program and having different placements for next year. Our proposal would be to increase on the right, to create a teacher for the deaf at a 80% position, that's a .8 FDE. That's a position to support students who are hearing impaired. We're seeing an increase in the number of students, and to ensure that those students can be educated here in their home community, we think it's critical to introduce that position, the teacher of the deaf position. The special education supervisor position, this would add a special education supervisor position to support elementary and middle educators. I think, you know, one of the things that, we're fortunate that our class sizes and caseloads are generally reasonable and manageable, but we think it's obviously important to support our educators and make sure that they're able to focus on the business of teaching kids. And next year, we're anticipating that DSE is rolling out a new IEP. It's going to be very demanding, require more procedural attention, and we think it's important to ensure that with that position, it will support educators, it will support families. Thank you. families, to ensure that we're meeting timelines, we're on track with process, and that we're getting all the paperwork done in the right manner. The sort of side benefit to this position is that our assistant principals at the elementary and middle level, I think it will, in effect, increase their capacity to respond to and perhaps work proactively against a lot of the behavioral challenges that we're seeing. Recall, last year, we talked about that shifting educational landscape. That was sort of the theme of the budget presentation last week, the shifting educational landscape. And we're just seeing students that need greater behavioral supports, greater behavioral interventions than ever before. And so we think that with that special education supervisor position, it's going to let our assistant principals work proactively to support families and students and teachers on the behavioral side particularly. The connection between the items on the left and right really represents simply a, with the creation of the Office of Student and Family Support, we want to provide access to, to a budget that allows the director to direct services and supplies. So it really, it's just a shift of some allocation from the Instructional Development Office, from the Curriculum Office, to the Office of Student and Family Support. This is a significant reduction. Title I is a grant that provides assistance to districts with high numbers or high percentages of children from low-income families. We had two schools that received Title I funds directly, Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp. We are anticipating a significant reduction in Title I funds next year, a reduction of about 38%, I believe, over FY24. It's a significant hit. We have student support centers at both Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp that have proven to be highly effective, but it's grant money that we're just anticipating is not going to be available to us next year. I'd also highlight, in the Metco coordination, we are in the process of thinking how we can reorganize Metco administration in a manner that would save about $40,000 or so. So that is in process as well. The Title I reduction is something that I think when Principal Materis and Principal Allen heard that news, it was frankly troubling, and, you know, we're going to have to, you know, figure out how to continue to support those students who have benefited from Title Sort of some other items on there, you'll see, we have at the top left, attrition relates to savings associated with the retirement of educators. You'll see that $33,000 number, that's about as low as we've ever seen. I mean, we've, we had a wave of retirements that generated some savings in recent years. We're not anticipating as many retirements as we have in recent years. And so when new educators replace veteran educators, there's some savings associated with that. So at the high school level, we're anticipating a .5 reduction in staffing. That's to be determined based on enrollment and class signups at LHS. You'll notice the proposed reduction in elementary and middle music education, we were fortunate to be able, we were in a position in FY24 to reallocate a position that wasn't needed at the high school to elementary and middle band. I think it was a wise decision, you know, sort of coming out of COVID, we wanted to make sure that we kids had experienced that recovery, just as we talked about academic recovery, we want to make sure that there's sort of behavioral recovery and that there's recovery in music education as well. We've seen a significant uptick in the number of 5th graders that have signed up for band, and that's super encouraging, and I think it's a good sign that we're getting back to the numbers that we have seen in recent history. When, you know, I had an opportunity to talk firsthand with, obviously, principals, but our elementary educators, just to understand the potential impacts. I think with our elementary staff, we have the instructional expertise, we have the capacity in their schedules to support the 5th grade band even at the increased numbers that we've seen. And our principals are confident in that, but I certainly understand that music education is a critical part of our identity in Long Meadow. And it is something that separates us and makes us a great district. What I'd say is that, you know, if this reduction were to, if the committee were to include this reduction in the FY25 budget, I'd say that our elementary and middle staffing will be at the levels that they've been at for the last 13 years or so, excepting the '23-'24 school year, of course. So we had an opportunity to allocate that position to the 5th grade this year, this school year. We think we're well-positioned and that we're going to be able to fully support our band students at 5th grade in the coming school year, even with the reduction that's proposed Vocational tuitions, we have a student who accesses a vocational program outside the LPVC, who was, who will be graduating, and so we'll see a, some savings associated with that. After-school services, this is a line item that we have historically haven't, in recent history, haven't needed to access, and so it's a, it's a reduction that we can confidently make in a way that we can say doesn't reduce services in that area as well. So those are the additions, the adjustments that were proposed last week. Sadly, we are sort of required to bring forward a, some additional potential reductions that would fit inside of the parameters that have been given to us by the town. And I think when we get to these Tier Two reductions, you know, this is where I can't stand before this committee or the community and say that these are things that we can manage through. I think these are, these are things that will result clearly in loss of critical service. And that's troubling for me to say that, no superintendent wants to say that, but we have to work with the revenue projections and the cost projections that are real and that are in front of us. Couple thoughts, I've sadly, in my 15 years as a superintendent, I've been down roads like this before. I can say with confidence that, you know, the budget continues to evolve, and some of the things that we are projecting here may or may not come to fruition depending on where ultimate aid settles in and where costs ultimately settle in and where student need ultimately settles in. So there's a lot that can change that could influence the projections that we're talking about tonight. My simple point is that we're not necessarily at the end of the road, we're at an important part of the road, but there's still plenty of decisions in front of us. So what this, the, to get to that 167,000 number, to reach the Tier Two reductions, what we would propose in a way that, you know, we've identified these as sort of, I can't say that, these, these will be impactful. I would say that these reductions are the least impactful reductions that we could identify, that we could bring forward to the school committee. An additional teacher, additional half a position at Long Meadow High, so it would bring the total FTE reduction at Long Meadow High to 1.0, the half from last week, and then, and then this addition tonight. I can tell you, you know, candidly, that Mr. Landers was really concerned when I had this conversation with him today. I always want to represent the, you know, sentiments of our administrators. I think we've had some enrollment-related reductions in recent years. We'll have to see how this plays out at Long Meadow High based on signups. Library services at the middle level, this would eliminate a Unit A library position at the middle level and replace it with a classroom aide. Right now, we have a librarian that works across Glenbrook and Williams, halftime at each school, provides important service and supplements and sometimes co-teaches and is involved in gathering research materials for kids and obviously managing the collection. But the position doesn't provide, doesn't, this is not an educator who has a direct instructional caseload the way most of our other Unit A educators do. Nursing services at Long Meadow High School, I would say, I'd almost caution and take the LHS off of this, this is, this position has sort of been a, it's stationed at Long Meadow High, but this is a floating nurse that will work across the district when there are vacancies and absences. We have, we've been in a better position to find substitutes for our nurses when they're out. And so we think this is one of the cuts that we could bring forward that, again, is least impactful. We would, we added this second nursing position at Long Meadow High probably four years ago, maybe, five years ago? Not even that long?
Since COVID.
Since COVID. And it's, it's been important and helpful, and as we all know, nurses do a lot more than, you know, tend to the medical needs of kids. They're there to really support the whole child. They are confidants, they are welcoming places to kids across the district. And so that's a position that we, we would replace that nursing position with a, with a health aide position. So there would still be, most times, a second adult in the nursing suite at Long Meadow High School, but the second position would be a health aide. Additional attrition, this represents an additional retirement that has come known to us. Transportation services, Mr. Mazza, Nicole Paris-Crow, our Special Education Director, they sort of sharpened the pencil to consider routing and transportation services that our kids will need next year, and we've identified $22,000 in savings there. And then some general, sort of cross-district supply reductions. I can tell you that that one is a, it's only $9,000, but this is a line that we haven't been increasing in recent years. So, you know, if a line item stays static, you're, you know, you're falling behind in terms of supplies, and so that reduction is nothing that, you know, that will be a challenge, I'd say. And so to kind of link last week's reductions with the reductions in blue, you'll see that the additions represent just over $2 million, but on the reduction side is $821,302. And so that's something that is reflected, that the delta between those two numbers is reflected in some of the earlier slides. Where does this leave us with class size? This is a document that hasn't changed from what was distributed to parents and staff last week. And so we think generally, these are favorable numbers, but again, I would caution and say that with enrollment, particularly at the elementary level, we try to be responsive to any shifts right up to the beginning of school. So we can have new registrations, we can have families move out, and we need to be responsive to the, to any shifts that we see. Candidly, you'll see, one of the class sizes that we've, we've heard about is at grade three. Right now, you're seeing a disparity between the three elementary schools. I'd say one of the things to remember is school choice, and it's potential, it's possible that we would identify some of the grade levels in schools that you're seeing here for school choice applications. And so that has the effect sometimes of evening out the class sizes across the elementary schools. But again, the other thing I'd note, and this is a huge variable, is the number of sections that we have designated for kindergarten. This is sort of an unknown. We think we're going to see an increase in kindergarten enrollment next year. Right now, we have 11 sections scheduled for kindergarten next year. Currently, we have 10. If, you know, if we don't see that increase, then that 11 kindergarten sections potentially comes back to 10, freeing up some funds for investments elsewhere in the budget. So there's a lot of, you know, still a lot of moving parts and a lot of things unsettled Just jumping ahead to middle school projected class size, these are averages. I think the folks assembled here understand that the middle school classes don't neatly fall into five sections because of math and word language. Backing up, you'll see the historical data. There we go, the wrong one. This, this reflects both the Tier One and the Tier Two reductions. You'll see that the total FTE count would decrease in Long Meadow Public Schools by six individuals if the Tier Two reductions were incorporated as well. So these are six FTEs that, in most cases, are not enrollment-related. Some of them are enrollment-related and are natural decreases that you would see even in a good year. Many of these reductions are ones that we would retain if we're in a position to do Appreciate everybody's patience, we're wrapping up, and we'll get to hopefully a rich conversation. On the left side, you know, what are some of the things that are still on the table that this, that this budget doesn't account for? And it's important to think about this, is an elementary literacy adoption. We have a team of elementary educators who are working incredibly hard and with an incredible amount of passion on zeroing in on a new ELA program for grades K through 5. This budget does not fund that. We hope for an adoption next year, and so question is, how are you going to do this? I think we need to continue conversations with the school committee about accessing end-of-year funds potentially, accessing revolving accounts. The governor, here's where an active citizenry can help us. The governor did earmark about $30 million for early literacy. I'd put a plug in to have us plea, make a plea, make a case that those, that $30 million be set aside for curriculum adoption and for teacher training. That would be a significant relief to this town if that $30 million that the governor earmarked came through to allow us to adopt the program that our educators identify. The additionally, I don't think I'd be representing our administrators well if I didn't highlight the second bullet on the left, which is, you know, how can we continue to invest in ensuring that we have appropriate behavioral supports and interventions in place consistent with the MTSS framework? Athletics, this budget, level funds, the Athletics, this budget level funds, the commitment from the general fund to LHS athletics, it does not increase that. And yet, we also know that, we hear from residents, from parents, that, you know, where a lot of our funding is reliant on gate receipts, user fees, and the generosity of the booster clubs, which in turn comes from donations from parents. So, athletics is something that this committee has talked frequently about. Instructional coaching, we know, we know what benefits there are to having coaches available to staff to support implementation of curriculum on a aligned and consistent basis. If I add my magic wand, there would be an additional literacy coach for the 24, 25 school year. With the new program coming on, we would benefit from having another instructional coach. And just generally, fully funding a curriculum renewal process, Beth Nelson, our curriculum director, is crafting a multi-year curriculum renewal plan. I think we need to have serious conversations about regularly funding that, incorporating that into the budget. On the right, all the variables. And I don't need to read the list for you, but you'll see there is a lot still up in the air. The town's fiscal position, state aid, utilities, you know, how much can we actually anticipate? It's based on our best projections, signups, fee-based services, school choice, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a lot in front of us, there's a lot of dust that needs to settle before this budget is fully cemented. And then, finally, next steps is the slide that we started this with. So, if you're still awake and alive, thank you, and turn it over to the chair.
All right, that was a lot. There's a lot of information here. Reminder that this information all lives on the district's website. So, if you head there, you can look at copies of this presentation. I know yesterday it was the older presentation, but I'm guessing by either later tonight or early tomorrow, the new presentation information will be there and available for everyone to look at. So, before we dive into our own conversations, I would love to open up for some public commentary. Just a quick note that we have, just in case anybody's here for something else, that we also have a public comment section coming up later as part of the regular meeting, not as part of the public hearing related to the budget. So, I will ask that comments at this point are related to the public hearing on the budget only. So, budget conversations and commentary, we'll circle back. If anybody's here for other things that are coming up later in the meeting, we'll have another section where you can dive in with those. Basic setup usually still the same. Try to keep your comments to roughly three minutes is helpful. And when you come up, we're going to have you come right up to the front here, say who you are, your connection to the district, and then you have the floor. We mostly tend to listen and take in, particularly at this point in the process, we still have a lot of conversations to have, both this week and next week, and realistically for the next couple of weeks after that. So, we might be able to answer clarifying questions, but we might just hear and take notes and ask you for feedback as we go. All right, I will open the floor if anybody would like to make the first run. Ms. Worland, come on up. Oh, yeah, on the other side, sorry.
Dear school committee, administration, parents, teachers, and students. My name is Kayla Worland, and I have the best job in the world. As music department chair and vocal music director at Long Meadow High School, I literally watch young people find their voices every day. For what I think is the first time in the 30 years I've worked in the Long Meadow Public Schools, I'm coming to the entire community to speak to you about the place of music education in Long Meadow. I will never forget my earliest days in Long Meadow, seeing 10-year-olds wobbling on their bikes, riding to school with a trombone case in one hand or a violin case on their back. I knew I had arrived at a very special place. I can still hear the voices of my first fifth-grade chorus at Williams Middle School in Long Meadow singing "This Little Light Of Mine" as the children made up their own verses about how their own light shined. In our music classrooms every day, whether in general music, band, orchestra, chorus, studio production, music theory, or basic guitar and piano, young people find their voices. In discovering their uniqueness, they discover their importance in the world. They contribute to what I always call the sonic dust that is in Long Meadow's air. This has been a year of amazing gains, more than doubling the number of students in our beginning programs. I am asking, whatever decisions are made in this difficult budget year, that we keep our vision of what makes this community so special, and I promise that I will. And now, I hope you'll excuse me, my husband came home today after nearly a week in the hospital, so I will be following the rest of the meeting, but I'll do it remotely. Thank you so much for your time and your passion.
Thank you very much.
Dr. O'Shea, members of the school committee. My name is Arthur Tomassian, and I'm the band and orchestra director here at Long Meadow High School, a position I have had the privilege to have had for the last six years. I'm also a resident of Long Meadow at 120 Eli Road. I am speaking regarding the proposed budget reduction of the .8 elementary school band director position. This is an essential position to the future successes of our students' music program. Long Meadow Public Schools K-12 music program, whether it be choral, orchestral, band, or general music, is an amazing program where students come to each class ready to learn, grow as people and as musicians. Band is an essential part of this program. Last year, we were so fortunate to see the reallocation of a high school position to the elementary school. This reinvestment into the LPS music program with a band instructor provides opportunities for our youngest musicians to have access to instruments, begin learning, and grow the program overall. With a band specialist, our students now have a dedicated teacher who can focus solely on, one, generating excitement for the band program as well as cultivating a strong musical culture; two, provide the beginning students a strong foundation of fundamentals on their instruments; three, this position sees how the beginning program sets up the rest of the program for success in terms of enrollment as well as instrumentation; and finally, they are tasked with creating a uniform curriculum across all three elementary schools. It is essential to have a thriving beginning program when speaking about equity, as some families may not be able to access private instruction independent of the school curriculum. If we provide the students with focused instruction from their first band experience, they are more likely to stay engaged in part of a sequential program. Excitedly, we saw an increase of about 54 elementary band students in the fall of 2022 to 106 elementary band students this past fall. With so many students enrolled in the fifth-grade program, a band specialist ensures all students start on equal footing regardless of what elementary school they are enrolled. With this new position combined with our plans for increased music program awareness, we are projecting continued increased enrollment. When our LHS students heard about the fantastic amount of beginning band students this year, they expressed pride and excitement about the future of the LPS music program years after these current high school students will call 95 grassy gutter their home. I am asking, as the Long Meadow High School band director and as a town resident, that you please reconsider this cut to an essential position within our program to ensure future opportunities for the students of the Long Meadow Public Schools. If you would like to discuss any of my points or would like for me to provide additional information, please feel free to be in touch. Again, I ask you, please reconsider this proposed cut to an essential part of our students' program. If we want a thriving music program in Long Meadow, we need to have strong roots of our tree. Thank you for your time and consideration. I also have a rehearsal right now, so I'm going to walk out. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee. My name's Michael Mucy. I'm 19 Sterling Street, Long Meadow. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight in a matter that is of great importance to our community, the potential cut to the fifth-grade band program. I had the pleasure of teaching music here in Long Meadow for 35 years. During that time, I appeared numerous times in front of our school committee to advocate for our music education in our town. Our community is very proud of our music program. In fact, the Long Meadow, Massachusetts Wikipedia page boasts of the town's music program and its crowning achievement, receiving three national Grammy awards based on the high level of excellence maintained throughout all levels of the music program. I personally knew of families who moved to Long Meadow because of the music program. The latest research consistently shows that students involved in instrumental music demonstrate improved cognitive skills, enhanced memory, higher levels of concentration. Learning to play an instrument requires discipline, focus, and dedication, qualities that are easily transferable to all areas of academic and personal life. By nurturing these skills at an early age, we are laying the foundation for student success in their future endeavors. We added the fifth-grade instrumental music position this year. We ended last year with 38 fifth-grade band students. This year, I've been told, there are 120 students enrolled in fifth-grade band. Enrollment has increased threefold. We should all be doing a dance. What other program in this district can say that? And our answer is to eliminate it? Clearly, reducing the fifth-grade band program would be a self-inflicted wound to the quality and breadth of our public school system. It's very important that our students be taught by an instrumental music specialist. Instrumental music teaching requires a very different skill set. Eliminating the fifth-grade band position would be a financial mistake. Consider the fact that if the 120 students currently studying instrumental music in the fifth grade had to instead pay a private teacher outside of our school district to learn their instrument. An average lesson now costs about $40. Let's say conservatively, each student will receive 30 lessons over a 40-week school year. Privately, that would cost a family approximately $1,200 per year. If you multiply that amount by the 120 students in our fifth-grade program, you come up with a total cost of $144,000. We're paying our fifth-grade band teacher $43,000. That saves our families in Long Meadow $101,000. That's serious bang for the buck. You are the stewards of this great program. The music program is a vertical program. What happens in the elementary school music programs directly affects the music programs at Williams and Glenbrook Middle Schools and the high school. The six building principals are charged with developing their own budgets, and they each have different needs and challenges. But you are the ones that are able to take the wide view of the program, how one cut somewhere can adversely affect a program at other grade levels. If you cut the roots of the tree, the tree will die. Dr. O'Shea mentioned that there have, we've been 13 years and the program still exists. Well, that's not quite true. When I retired in 2013, almost half of the students in the high school were involved in music. Think about that. It was cool to be in the music program. It's now a quarter. So, no, it's not business as usual. We've lost literally half of the program. In conclusion, the fifth-grade program is not merely an extracurricular activity. It is an investment in the cognitive, social, and emotional development of our children. By maintaining this program, we are ensuring a brighter and more enriching future for each and every student in our schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
We also have someone online.
We'll get to folks online in a moment, too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Pratt. I have three children in the system. They are in fourth grade, second grade, and kindergarten at Center School. I am the video president at Center School. I was kindergarten aide at Center School last year, and I sub in all of the schools this year, so I'm pretty involved in the school system. I don't have a prepared statement. I really just have a list of questions that I think it would be good for parents to ask, for you guys to ask the teachers, for you guys to consider when you're looking at the budget. Sorry, I feel kind of like I'm on trial here. You're bringing in a lot of administrative roles. I think it would behoove you to look at how many administrative roles you've brought in over the past couple of years and how much that has cost the district. You talk about making a difference in behaviors in students, and that's what you want to do. But really, who is working with the students all day, every day? It's the teachers, it's the aides, it's the people who are in the classrooms every day, helping the kids, building those relationships, making them feel safe. It's the extracurricular activities that make them feel like they belong to something, that gives them something to be excited about going to school for. It's your librarians, your music teachers, your kindergarten aides, maybe you need first grade aides, you just need more people in the classrooms who are there for the children, right? Your administrators are great, you guys do important things, they follow the paperwork, they follow the data, and that's amazing. But what you really need is people in the classrooms with the kids, and you're eliminating those positions. You're, you don't even pay them well, right? Like kindergarten aides don't make anything, but administrators make hundreds of thousands of dollars. You could have multiple aides for the same amount of money that you're paying them, right? Not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but far more than a kindergarten aide, right? So, I would just ask you to maybe look at where you're putting that money, how many administrators you really need. Do you really need a special education supervisor at each elementary school when you have an assistant principal that you hired specifically to do that, right? Like you had special education administrators, you moved that down to two to put in the assistant principals, now you're bringing another one back, and you're eliminating full-time education roles. You know, how many roles are vacant right now that should be helping the students? Right now, we don't have a math specialist at Center School, that role has been unfilled for a while. That would help with a lot of behavioral issues if a child is super frustrated because they can't figure out the math, but they don't have any support for that. You know, why don't we have those roles filled? Could you bring in more school counselors who could really help with those behavioral issues? I am not discounting what administrators do, I think they're great, I think they care about the students, but I think if you really do want to change behavioral things, you need more people in with the kids daily, and you might want to look at how you're allocating those funds. So, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Sorry, one quick question. What was that role you said at Center School that was vacant?
So, the math specialist or the interventionist, it's been vacant for a little while. She's on maternity leave, but they tried to fill it, and it just hasn't been filled.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
It's your hand, go first, screen switcher.
Hello, my name is August Williams. I'm in 11th grade. I care deeply about the quality and direction of our Long Meadow Schools music program. Currently, I play piano, drums, percussion, and sing for honors lyrics. I would like to read this media piece written 14 years ago about our LHS orchestra under the erection of Michael Mucy. The American Prize is pleased to announce that the Long Meadow High School Symphony Orchestra of Long Meadow MA, Michael Mucy conductor, is the 2010 winner of the American Prize in orchestral performance, secondary school division. Congratulations. In making their decision, the judging panel praised the Long Meadow High School orchestra. Strings play with confidence and beautiful sonority, intonation is extraordinarily good, and exciting cohesive sound. The Long Meadow High School Symphony Orchestra is comprised of the 55 strings of the string orchestra and the 44 wind players of the Select Wind Ensemble. The Symphony Orchestra has been invited to perform on three occasions at the National Orchestra Festival held at Carnegie Hall in New York City. The Symphony Orchestra has also performed at the National Orchestra Gold Festival at Boston Symphony Orchestra, and has appeared numerous times at the Massachusetts Music Educators Allstate Convention. The Long Meadow High School Music Department has recently received three Grammy Signature Awards from the National Association of Recording Arts and Sciences. Congratulations to the Long Meadow High School Symphony Orchestra and the Stevenson High School Patriot Orchestration for their outstanding performance. School Patriot Orchestration for their outstanding achievement, ranked among the finest high school orchestras in the country. This was fourteen years ago when our Long Meadow High Schools and Long Meadow Schools in general had always had a band director servicing instrumentalist students at all the schools, fifth through eighth. Those students arrived at LHS ready to shine. Let's get our Long Meadow Public Schools back to this point, find a way to support keeping the band director position at our elementary and middle schools. We want to be the best in music at Long Meadow High School. Otherwise, the music program, which has become very important to many students, myself included, will greatly suffer. Like, music is something that matters more than almost anything to me, and it all started because of elementary school. Like, if I never got that opportunity to do music, I don't even know where I would be right now. Like, that is something that matters so much to me, and it was because of elementary school, teachers that teach in music that gave me the opportunities to play and new performances and become better with being in front of other people and having those experiences. And if there was no band director, there'd be nobody in control of this, and it's just something that matters a lot to me, and I think this position is a very, very important position that needs to stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, my name's Tony Onision, and I teach instrumental music at Williams and Glenbrook Middle Schools. I just briefly want to speak in support of our elementary band specialist teacher. The fifth grade band's growth is fantastic for our townwide program, and I'm really thrilled as the middle school band director about its expansion. As some have mentioned, the fifth grade is the most important year for band recruitment, and the program has doubled in just a year. If we maintain this momentum, and retention rates are similar to last year, all have more than a hundred sixth graders in band, just sixth grade band alone, next year, which is really, really exciting. And with this class size, I teach with the elementary school band director one day a week. I'm very lucky to do so. I'd, of course, love to have this person again if I'm going to have a class of fifty band kids at Williams and fifty band kids at Glenbrook as well. I'd love to have this person in my room. And hopefully, as the years progress and our current fifth graders become seventh graders and eighth graders with similarly sized classes behind them, I will have this person by my side one day a week. He's been such a great help to me at Williams and Glenbrook on Fridays. Also, given the size of the class, it's great to see the impact of the elementary school band teacher on my rising sixth graders. Even though we have three elementary schools in town, I'd love if all my sixth graders had the same experience of being taught by our elementary school band director so we can all enter middle school on the same page. I'm really excited about that for the future. And finally, having an elementary band teacher in my classroom once a week adds so much valuable expertise. So many people ask me as a band teacher, well, can you play every instrument? And the answer is yes. I know the basic pedagogy of everything, but I've been playing trombones since fourth grade, and so that's my specialty. And I'm so lucky this year that our elementary band teacher, his specialty is percussion, which is a different world and universe of techniques and pedagogies that, like, I only know the basics of, even as a band director. And I'm so thankful for his expertise in teaching, and for the first time in my entire career, we had two percussion kids make the district honor ensemble, because he was so kind to travel to schools after school, even though he wasn't at Williams or Glenbrook that day, to work with these individuals and share his expertise, which, again, I just know the basics of percussion pedagogy, and he knows so much more of me about percussion technique. And finally, I would be remiss if I did not highlight the wonderful qualities of our current elementary school band teacher. My principals Nicole and Nikki have been really kind in allowing me to observe the Blueberry and Wolfswamp Band rehearsals this past week, and he teaches with kindness, with patience, and thoughtful approach. And I really love seeing him interact with students after all the elementary concerts, which I also attended, and seeing all of the elementary school kids, like, really cheerfully say, ah, see you next Thursday. And I really hope to see such interactions in the future as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Diane Porfilio. I live at eighty Cheshire Drive here in Long Meadow. Members of the school committee and Dr. O'Shea, good evening. I am co-president of SEAL, the Special Educational Alliance of Long Meadow. I am here this evening representing SEAL. SEAL is in support of the new model that has been proposed in the new school budget for an additional special education supervisor at the elementary school level. We feel that certified special education supervisor is necessary at the elementary school level. Certified special education supervisors are trained individuals who receive training in strategic planning of program development, enrollment forecasting, and compliance issues. They have a background in special education that has built a strong foundation and knowledgeable base on the complex legal and compliance issues as well. They are responsible for supporting and mentoring staff and guidance in classrooms, as well as implementing IEP services in and out of our school system. They are the foundation of a strong program as they recognize strengths of the system and the staff, can foresee issues in upcoming years, offer knowledge and support to parents who often feel at a loss for their children, and become the leaders in navigating our children to become the best that they can be. SEAL is in strong support of the new proposed model for an additional special education supervisor at the elementary school level. In previous years, we had a special education supervisor for our preschool, three for each of our elementary schools, two for our middle schools, and one for our high school. We feel this is what was the best model. Our children and parents need help, support, and guidance from knowledgeable and accessible special education supervisors. We need qualified special education supervisor to mentor staff, recognize students' struggle, and provide support for any child in our system. We know that this day and age, special education may add a wide complex of issues and diagnoses. No two IEPs should be the same as are designed for each child and their specific need. We ask that you support the new model presented at the school budget meeting for an additional special education supervisor at the elementary school level, especially at this point in our children's lives when support for them and parents and caregivers are crucial. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Megan Downing. I'm the co-president.
She's co-president.
I'm here for support.
Thank you.
And I'll give my kids a due.
I'm gonna just pause for one minute from folks in the room, because we have a lot of folks at home, too, and just ask folks at home if you could raise a hand again so we can call on someone from home. Is that everyone right now? Oh, I just saw a hand go up. Hannah Rosenman.
Hi, am I allowed to talk?
Yep, absolutely. You're up.
Hi, I did not plan on attending this meeting at all and have not thought what I was about to say. I attended Long Meadow Schools from K eight through twelve, and I was in the music program starting in fourth grade all the way until senior year where I was a section leader in lyrics. And I just think that it's fitting for me to be able to give my support of the music program. Incidentally, I'm actually in the music building of my college right now, which I think is a testament to how important this program is for children in Long Meadow, because it was something that was such a grounding force for me all the way through my education. And I just think it's really telling that this is now outside of Long Meadow Schools where I still choose to spend my time, and still choose to create my social circles and to gain these skills that are very important for growing up. And I just wanted to voice my support for the program as someone who's, I just graduated last year from the high school. So I didn't plan any of this, but I'd just like to voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I can kind of pass you a name. Is it Megan Henchon? Megan Henchon. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for organizing this meeting. Thanks for your presentation, Dr. O'Shea, and thank you to the teachers, especially and our administrators and our school committee. I plan to speak about the elementary school full-time educators, but I'd like to talk about two things that have gone before me. One, I just, regarding Evelyn Pratt's admonition to stay on notice about, you know, the balance between administrative positions and positions that have direct interaction with the classroom. I do think this is a broader issue in society, and I would just, and people have spare time. It was just published in the New York Times by David Brooks, "Death by a Thousand Paper Cuts," and how our society's answer to a lot of things is to add layers of administration. So I just wanted to point that out more generally as we think critically about the budget. Number two, the music program. So impressed that Hannah dialed in from school. My daughters are in the music program at Long Meadow High. My son is in chorus at Williams, and I will say that firsthand, I can say, Mr. Mucy is right. Things have changed musically at the high school. They still have excellent musicians and award-winning programs and award-winning students, but participation is down. And I would point to chorus especially, and, you know, if you wanted to dig in, it would probably be good to interview you, the staff there. Things are different. I think music is a little bit more of an exceptional person's pursuit, where the honors-level band, chorus, and orchestra is thriving interest, but I think the general has been, you know, a little bit lagging. And just like Mr. Mucy said, you know, half the people wouldn't used to participate. And I think Dr. O'Shea talked a lot about Long Meadow's secret sauce. And I'll just say, you know, I was educated in Springfield Public Schools, kindergarten through sixth grade. I moved here in seventh grade. I went to Williams for seventh and eighth, and I decided to go to Cathedral for a high school. And I still had a foot at Long Meadow as well. And I will say, the secret sauce to Long Meadow, as evidenced especially at the high school level, is it's cool to care a lot about school and be curious about academics, it's cool to be in music, and it's cool to be in sports. That's the secret sauce. It's a place where all these things are held in equally high regard, and the budget needs to be constructed with that cultural spirit in mind. I mean, that is what's special about this town. And now, just to not go over too much, but, you know, my main point is, when we talk about the budget, we get into lines and numbers, and I really want us to keep an eye on, does the budget enable us to deliver excellence in education and fulfill our vision of the graduate, you know, dreams, you know, all those pillars, accountability, independence, so forth. I think we do have to keep a strict eye on class sizes, because I think we know the impact of class size on learning. And especially when it comes to Blueberry, I know Dr. O'Shea presented exactly what's happening with recommendations for next year, and, you know, I have two daughters also in second grade, and, you know, there's a high proportion of students in that grade that are being pulled out of the classroom for intervention services. So, you know, that's an area that we don't want to see large class sizes. And I think when we look at budgets, it's like, what's the best way to solve a problem? And so, you know, we want kids becoming independent. That's part of our vision in the graduate. So that's, you know, being literal, that's independent reading. That's not dependence on services for, you know, for the cohorts that are not there but almost there. So I think keeping those class sizes is absolutely essential, rightsizing that, given the particular needs of a given grade or a moment in time. So I really would strongly encourage us not to cut any fold on elementary school teachers. So I did say, I'm Megan Henchon, sixty-one, over five kids, in Long Meadow Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna come back to the room. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Noah Eaton. I'm a ninth grader at LHS. I play trumpet in the wind ensemble, and I sing tenor in lyrics. And I'd like to speak in support of the elementary band specialist and how music has helped me through my life. As you might have been able to tell from my accent, I'm not from around it. I moved from the UK to the US right before the pandemic hit, and all the way through lockdown, it was really difficult for me. I only had one good friend, and I was really lonely at home, and I didn't feel good in school, at home, in school. But when, in the next year in 2021, when I could get back into school and music came back, that's when I felt like I found a community that I could be a part of, and I felt like I could find friends and find people to be with, and I just became a lot more comfortable in school. And as that continued into the next year and music continued to come back, I was able to feel a lot more comfortable being in school every day with that community I'd found in music. And then, on top of that, I've found music has pushed me many times to challenge myself in ways I wouldn't have done otherwise. And sometimes, these things have been too difficult for me, but a lot of the time, they've challenged me to go back and have that courage to go back to this ensemble, to return to this difficult piece. And that's really built up my resilience that I've then been able to bring to other aspects of my life, my academics and other areas of school. It's really helped me. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming up.
My name is Regina Choi, a sophomore at Long Meadow High School, and I play viola in the orchestra. I have two older sisters who graduated from LHS, and they both played instruments since they were in elementary school. One of our fond childhood memories is dressing up nicely and going to each other's school to watch the concerts with our parents. Since my parents believe that music is one of the most powerful tools to impact our lives positively, they always encourage us to be exposed to all kinds of music in and outside of school. They are so grateful that our town has a fantastic music program where students are able to experience them at school if they wish to. Because of that, my sisters and I were able to have a chance to learn five different instruments throughout elementary to high school without any financial burden. What we have learned from music programs is not only the skills, but we have also learned about collaboration, cooperation, friendship, teamwork, and how to create harmony musically and socially. We strongly believe that these positive effects allow us to maintain a well-balanced life. Personally, I am quiet and introverted, but I am confident to express myself through music, and I've seen how helpful music is to people who need some comfort by volunteering at a local nursing home. With these experiences, my interest was narrowed down to the music field, and I'm still unsure what I will pursue. But one thing I really know is that Long Meadow Schools music programs and music teachers have guided me to find the destination of my journey. I honestly had no idea about the budget and financial difficulty, but I understand it is a very complicated and hard decision for everybody. However, the reason why my sisters and I wrote this is that we would like to share the benefits that we had from our music programs with next generations, not only for us but for everyone, so we can all have equal and fair valuable learning and hope that they're able to utilize the experiences on their lives positively like us. I appreciate you for listening to our letter and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
Hello, Dr. O'Shea and members of the committee. I'm a parent of two children in the Long Meadow Schools. My son, August, who you heard from, and then my daughter, Ruby, is at Wolfswamp Road School, and she's in fifth grade, just starting flute. I would just like to read a letter on behalf of some parents who also have students in the music program. Thank you to each of you collectively for your service as a member of the Long Meadow School Committee. We truly appreciate the tremendous amount of time, energy, and thoughtfulness you contribute to our community, especially during budget season. We also appreciate the opportunity to share our thoughts and feelings with you regarding the proposed school budget, as we recognize that the process is incredibly complicated and challenging in considering and balancing the facts and figures with the lives and emotions involved. With this understanding of the difficulty of your task, we are respectfully requesting your attention regarding the proposed reduction of the elementary and middle school music teacher, point-eight band instructor position, and the salary of forty-three thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. Our Long Meadow Public Schools music program is simply amazing, as you've heard. Every music teacher at every level plays a vital role in providing valuable, enriched music instruction, including instilling and enhancing skills that translate to other academic areas. academic areas such as math and reading, while also building communities that foster positive social, emotional, mental, and overall health and wellness for our children. From general music, band, chorus, orchestra, and strings, to music theory, every music teacher who instructs and inspires, every student who participates, every family who engages, every school who supports, every alum who stays connected, and a district who celebrates music education comprise our wonderful music program. And the .8 band instructor is part of that special and valuable big picture. We know you have many discussions ahead and decisions before you, and we're eager to collaborate with you and brainstorm alternative funding sources to keep the music teacher position. One such thought is to ask you to consider contracting with a grant specialist to find a music education grant, cultural arts grant, or socio-emotional grant to fund the position. Again, we recognize that budget review and approval process is lengthy and complex, and we're grateful for your time and consideration of this. And I'd just like to read the names that go with the letter, myself included. Catherine Drami, Gianna Allentuck, Darren Karan-Taran-Nicol, Edina Chu, Rachel Eaton, Oxana Christopherakis, May O, Brett Lukcik, Stella Coughlin, Erin Kobler, Liang Nitsk... Themsky, sorry, Janet Bergeron, Kathy Ray, Terry Pao, and Catherine Mang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Casper. I've worked as a music teacher at Wolf Swamp for the past nine and a half years. Recently, I've seen our community jump to defend the elementary band program. That support is gratifying and makes me proud and happy to teach children at our school. I find myself in an odd position because I have to, I feel like maybe we don't know everything, or you don't know everything that's going on. I need to address some misinformation that has come to my attention regarding the elimination of an elementary and middle school band director position. In the past, band and lessons have been taught by the general music teachers as 20% of our full-time teaching positions. So we are, in fact, band teachers who teach fifth grade band, and should that position be cut, we would be teaching bands, just like we always have. The position created last year was supposed to support our band programs, but instead, we music teachers have found ourselves sitting in the backseat while someone else was given the title of band director and 20% of our jobs. We feel this has been an egregious waste of money, as well as a waste of our time, our experience, and our skills. Nobody has asked us what we do, what our specialties are, what our experiences are. One of the students who came up and spoke very nicely, guys were good, was, was started on band through one of the elementary general music teachers. It seems good. So we'd like to reassure the committee and the community that the noticeably larger number of students involved in the band program this year was solely due to our recruitment efforts in our music classrooms last year. Those numbers were in place before the new person had even begun. And I don't want to discount anything that he's doing for, for working with them, I just, I just want to be fair. Those positions were there, we recruited those kids. Okay, sorry, getting a little. Some information that has been put out into the public and sent to this committee might lead one to believe that there hasn't been any elementary band at all in town before this year, and that the new hire is somehow responsible for saving the program. In fact, elementary music teachers have been starting band students in the Long Meadow Elementary Schools for decades, and the program has thrived. Please give credit where credit is due. The three of us elementary music teachers have more than 45 years of experience in music classrooms, teaching all sorts of different things, and this was the job that we were hired to do. You're paying us to do this job. The proposed cut would simply return the program back to how it was and will not take away any quality instruction time for elementary or middle school band students. So I hope that doesn't sound like I'm coming out against music. I love music, I teach music, I have fun with music. I just feel like you needed to hear what was already there. So thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Drysdale-Morrissey, and for the last 14 and a half years, I've taught general music and band at Center School. I taught some of your children band. By the way, I am also an instrumental music teacher, I am a band teacher. I received a Bachelor of Music in Music Education with a concentration in flute. I then went on to earn a Master of Arts at McGill University, which is, you may know, Canada's Ivy League number one school in Canada. I've been teaching band a very long time. But last year, my band, a full 20% of my teaching load, was reassigned to a newly created position, elementary band director. This, even though I had ample time in my schedule, 15 years of band experience, and a model program for this district, I am left with hours of empty holes in my schedule, where I often do meeting coverage, substitute teaching for classroom teachers in things like English and math. I was devastated. In justifying this new position, the high school music department claimed that we were failing to recruit successfully. This is an outright lie. Here at Center, I've averaged 29 students in band for the last 14 years. Last spring, I recruited 43 to the band before the new position was even announced. But the high school staff continue to claim that high enrollment is due to the new position. What an insult to the hard work of the elementary music colleagues and that we have done to build these programs. And by the way, we finished last year with 50, not 38. Originally, we were told we'd be co-teaching band and sharing the responsibilities, an extra pair of hands, they said, to help us teach large groups. More lies. In September, I was told that this new position would be teaching band only on Thursdays. And then my Thursday schedule was filled with general music classes for younger grades. When I offered to teach small groups during the three hours of empty blocks I have on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, I was told no. Band happens Thursdays now. This is an egregious waste of taxpayer money. I have three hours of empty holes in my schedule. In a budget-cut year, this sort of waste is absolutely indefensible. After 18 months of insult after insult, the elementary music teachers are done being the scapegoats for the high school music programs, low enrollment. So I want to be very, very clear. This is not a cut to the music program. No one is cutting your fifth grade band. No one is cutting your music program. We elementary music teachers are deeply caring about this band program, which is why we are begging you to let us teach it. Please. Our students deserve the very best, most qualified teachers, and that is us. The same music teachers these students have been building relationships with since kindergarten. We know them so well. Give the bands back to the elementary music staff, that's the right thing to do. It's right for our budget, it's right for our music program, and it's right for the students of Long Meadow. If you have questions, I welcome them. I acknowledge there is a lot of misinformation floating around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Do we see anybody online? I just want to make sure I'm not missing folks, because there's some kind of hidden on the screen. If you are at home and are hoping to talk, you will need to either turn a camera on or put a hand icon up. All right, I'm not seeing any there. Folks in the room. All right, seeing no further comments, I'm going to close public comment. I do want to take a moment to just kind of thank, number one, everybody for coming out. It is always good to have so much engagement, particularly when we're in the middle of budget season, and there is so much going on. I also want to give a little bit of extra thanks to a handful of folks, too. Number one, I want to give a little extra thanks to all of our young, new citizens that are joining the ranks of political engagement, I love that. As a history teacher, it's one thing that I'm very engaged in and love seeing, so kudos to our students for coming out and for speaking and for having things to say and being engaged in this process. And thank you also to all of our educators, staff, and administrative staff also, who have come out after a long day already, and appreciate you guys taking the time to be here as well. So, thank you very much. Everyone is welcome to stay, this is not a goodbye, it's just, we're going to move forward from this part and head into discussions amongst us. So, all right, where do we want to start? Who would like to kick something off? Oh, all right. Yes, Julie, go for it. Questions? Good time for them.
Well, I was just thinking about some of the comments we got, and wondered, Marty, can you explain a little bit more about the difference between the role that the assistant principal plays in special education and the role that the special education supervisors play?
Sure. Are you saying currently, or as it, as it might be if the position were, if the...
I mean, present and future, sounds great.
Yeah. I would say that the, and I'll invite some help from Nicole Perisgore, our special education director, we have sort of defined the roles and responsibilities of our special education supervisors relative to our assistant principals. I think there's sort of the, a lot of the operational things that the assistant principals continue to be involved with, car line, lunch duty, supervision of staff, responding to parent concerns, supporting students who might need some additional time with them. Our special education, with regard to special education, Nicole, if you could, if I could invite you up to help me out with regard to...
I can hear the whole question.
Question is, the, the current role of our special education supervisors relative to the assistant principals, and it might be helpful to talk about the evaluation process and initial evals versus reevals and team meetings and that kind of thing, so, sorry to put you on the spot, but I...
I'd be happy to. And while I'm up here, I just want to clarify something, the special education supervisor position is not an administrative position. They're not an administrator, they're, it's a Unit A position, same as teachers are Unit A, so I just wanted to kind of clarify that for folks here and folks at home, so it's not a layer of administration. The supervisors and, so what we currently have in place is, we have two special education supervisors that are district, district employees. They are not housed, so to speak, in a school per se, but they help oversee Blueberry, Blueberry School, Wolf Swamp School, Center School Special Education, as well as some of our private schools at Yeshiva and St. Mary's and other private schools that we have Long Meadow students attending. They oversee, help oversee that caseload as well. They also help with some of our out-of-district caseloads in addition to that. So that's their current role. Their primary focus in the elementary schools this year has been on initial reevaluations, so chairing and facilitating those meetings, speaking with families that are requesting or students that have gone through the MTSS process and that have led them to initial evaluations, they oversee that whole process. They meet with families, they meet with the school psychologists, they determine, along with the team, what evaluations make sense for the student to have based on the, you know, the disability that they are thought maybe have. They follow that whole process from beginning to end. Facilitating the meeting, chairing the meeting, the paperwork from beginning to end, meeting with the teachers, meeting with the parents, after, when and if the student is found to qualify for special education, they meet with the team to determine the best course of programming, what their service delivery grid would look like, the type of direct instruction that they need. So that's the initial process. And so the two special ed supervisors in the current roles, that is what they focus on amongst the three elementary schools. I should also state that we have a full-time special education supervisor at the high school, who manages and oversees not only the initials, but the initials, the reevals and programming here for the high school. We also have a preschool coordinator who is also a special education supervisor in BCBAs at the preschool level as well. But the two particular positions that we're talking about, they also have supported and mentored the APs and their journey through the addition, additional responsibilities of special education in their roles. They also support the reevaluation process in conjunction with the APs. They work with families, they work with mentoring new staff, paraprofessionals, special education teachers, they help support programming needs and scheduling thoughtfulness around where students would best fit in schedules and in classrooms. So that is part of, that's a very big part of what they do. If that answered your complete question?
Yeah.
Right? And then the APs are obviously building-based, and they are there to co-lead a building, right? They're there to work with the gen ed staff, the special education staff, they're there to be, to work with families, they're there to support lunch duties and recesses and car lines, behavior, social emotional learning. It's a big role. And then, when you add, when you have an AP and supervisor responsibilities, especially in elementary school setting, bless you, that, that can be, you know, two full-time jobs in itself, right? We're looking at 350-ish to 400 students in a building across six grades. So the addition of having a special education supervisor, that their focus is on special education from beginning to end, is, would be a huge asset, especially with some of the additional responsibilities that are going to be coming from DESI in regards to this new IP. Thank you. You spoke to that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Follow-up questions and/or different questions? Yes, Jamie?
Not really a follow-up question, more just a comment on it. I mean, looking at this last week, I, I kind of glossed over it and came back to it. And I guess the only thing I would kind of challenge everybody to, I don't know who one of the, our guests spoke, and I think Megan Hencham spoke as well, and kind of come back to the, how many chiefs, how many Indians? We keep adding a lot of chiefs, and there's a lot of layers that we added in the last three years. And I don't know if this is the right or wrong, but I, I almost kind of look at it and say, hey, maybe this isn't the right, or, you know, the assistant, because whenever we had spoken about it three or four years ago, whenever we added the assistant principals, they were going to take on a lot of these duties. I get, it's all changing, a lot of this is changing, you know, COVID made this a little crazy. But I almost kind of challenge whether we want more boots on the ground, you know, using my analogies here, you know, or we want more people kind of doing paperwork, you know, is, do we want more people in front of children, or not in front of children, you know, and kind of looking at that. I'm not saying don't spend on special ed, I think there's a heavy need there. You know, there's definitely the need, but is that how you want to spend your money? I kind of challenge us, is it? I don't know. All I know is we've spent a bunch of administrative over the last number of years, and I, I honestly do not have a good feel for it. I, I said yes to it at that point. I, I really want to kind of come back to this and understand what we're really spending on, and how does it connect to the assistant principals and everybody else that we've added in order to support special ed.
I could be happy to speak to that.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I, I don't, if you want to address that, I was going to kind of provide a counterpoint, just playing devil's advocate.
We'll do, address first, maybe then, and then...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, no, I apologize. I'm famous for interrupting people.
Well, so am I, so then they just get nothing done, it'd be awesome. So I just wanted to speak to that. So I, I hear what you're saying, however, I just want to re-clarify, this is an administrative position. This is a coach, you could think of it, this is somebody that can come in and help mentor our new teachers, our paraprofessionals, our BCBAs, our RBTs, work with our special education tutors. This is a person in the building that can provide an array of on, what, boots-on-the-ground support. They can go in and work with children, they can teach somebody how to take data. They can teach somebody how to take data, how to do an assessment. This is a person that I think is a huge asset. And when you speak to boots-on-the-ground, the Special Education Supervisors and paraprofessionals and teachers and BCBAs and RBTs I've worked with, provide that every day for one another. As a person who came into the world of education as a paraprofessional, I can speak to the fact that had I not worked with people that were modeling for me and coaching me and supporting me throughout my career, I wouldn't be here right now. So, I really have to stress to you that supervisors have that background, have that experience. Many of the supervisors that we currently have in the positions, we have started as paraprofessionals, started as teachers, and they take that knowledge and experience and they bring that back into their school communities.
I completely appreciate that. I've just been, sorry, just one thing. Just been sitting here for the last number of years? That's not what the, what you described is what I understood the Assistant Principals to be doing. So, whenever you say that, it sounds like we're doing the same thing at a different level. I get, maybe it's not supervision, maybe it shouldn't be called a supervisor then.
I agree.
So, I mean, you know, maybe that's something internal that doesn't make any sense why you would call it supervisor, but whenever we sat here talking, everything you described, 70% of it, is what my understanding is the, so it's my kind of challenge back is, how do we want to be structured going forward? What's the best for the Special Education Department? With a limited amount of dollars, is this the best way to spend it? And do we know what everyone is going to be taking care of? That's kind of what, not saying that, don't spend this, saying, I'm just kind of sitting back because it feels the same as three or four years ago. It was the, that's what I thought the AP was doing. That's what I thought. Maybe I'm completely wrong, but I sat here and that's what I heard. That's, but that's just one individual. So, that's my only concern on that before we move...
Jamie, I'm going to just have, I think, Dr. She was waiting to address the Assistant Principals, too.
Yeah, and I, I want to, I think, if the committee would like us to sort of bring back some other ideas for that allocation, we're happy to do that. We can gather and bring some things back at a future meeting for you. And I, and I think I would agree with everyone who said that sort of boots-on-the-ground is incredibly important. And I think if you look at our FTE, the reason we put the FTE information here is to show that, in fact, we have made those boots-on-the-ground investments. I don't want to, I think this school committee should take credit for making investments at the classroom level. We've also made some investments around coordination and supporting educators and supporting families, but 443 FTEs in FY17 and FY24 that voted the 459, that's 16 FTE increases. Those are investments in school adjustment counselors, the school nurse, the RBTs. I'm looking over at Gianna, who was formerly on our school committee, who knows, you know, the path that we took to make those investments at the classroom level. So, I totally agree that when we can make those investments at the classroom level, it has the greatest impact for children. I think, I would always advocate for that. I think we also have to be cognizant of, you know, supporting families and educators and responding to student needs with all layers. So, I think that FTE chart tells a really important story in some of the investments that we've made.
All right. So, I'm sorry, the supervisor position is a direct response to families, to students, and to staff.
All right, Adam, and then Julie?
I mean, I unfortunately had to take an administrative role in my job very reluctantly, and I have huge respect for administrators. You know, going back to my very short tenure as a classroom teacher, it's incredible the amount of support you can get. And with the restructuring that's, as I understand it, gone on in this, you know, community, I can't imagine the roles that, you know, people had before we created these new directorship positions. So, I know, you know, when you're looking at these numbers, it can seem kind of scary with what we're going to have to be doing with the budget, but to go back and question what we've done with adding the administrators. All these administrators are in place, and I don't think there's too many of them, you know, to support the teachers so that with the boots we have on the ground, they can be more effective in the classroom and they have some of that burden taken off of them that the administrators can help to kind of keep them more focused on, you know, each student so that they can come up with this differential instruction that we want with each student. So, it, I understand that, again, when you're looking at these numbers and we, you know, had comments from people saying like, we've got so many administrators, I think it meets the needs of the community as education is changing and how we keep talking about wanting to have increases year to year, I think that that commitment to having the administrators in place is what shows that Long Meadow is still staying at the forefront of education here.
Julie?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, because I feel like I kicked something off with my question, but I actually defer to your judgment on whether, like, how to kind of allocate the resources at those levels, but I think some of what you can hear from the conversation is like two things. One, sometimes when you come in and describe positions to us, we then forget from, like, what exactly the roles are. So, I think some, in some cases, it's actually just good to be reminded of what. And then two, I think one of the public commenters said, you know, this is kind of a trend that we're seeing in other sectors, too, where there's an increase in administrative and managerial support. And as a result, I think people do have a little bit of skepticism, and so I think maybe, you know, it's just helpful, like, moving forward for us to kind of help people understand a little bit better how we're thinking about that balance between people in the classroom and administrative services and then what some of those intermediate roles are that are not classroom teachers but are really supporting and taking some of the burden off of classroom teachers or supporting them. I think it's just helpful for us all to be reminded periodically.
Sure.
Yeah. Can I follow up with a question for you as well?
Of course.
Before we move forward? So, one of the things I was wondering is, and I agree with a lot of what everybody has said here, these are really important positions. We also don't want to become too top-heavy, but the idea of this being a Unit A position also, I'm curious with the new IEP formatting that is coming out, is that something that is likely to be a heavy lift for a short time while everybody understands the new implementation or sort of just a heavy lift moving forward from this time?
Yeah, you're saying it right both ways. It's a, it's going to be a heavy lift moving forward. It's definitely going to feel some relief right from the beginning, but moving forward, I'm hoping my vision for this position and the three positions is that they facilitate those IEP meetings, the annuals, the initials, the reevals, that they coordinate the paperwork, that they provide teachers the opportunity to provide that direct instruction, more push-in into classrooms, more collaboration time. So, yes, so definitely.
Okay. And so, this position would be K through eight, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and the two that are already here are K through five.
So, it primarily be at the elementary school. I should clarify, primarily at the elementary school. Each one of these positions will be housed at the elementary school.
Okay.
And provide some additional support at the middle level.
Okay.
With some of the initials and reevaluations. But their main, 90%, I would say, of their responsibilities will be at the elementary level.
Mary?
I think some of the questions are coming about because I know the APs, the Elementary Assistant Principals were originally tasked with overseeing the Special Education programs in those schools. And so, to go back to something Marty said like 10 minutes ago, which is, I think it would be really helpful if you prepared something that clarified what the role of the Assistant Principal, what the intention was when that change was made, what, how it's playing out now, because we've had a global pandemic since that plan was put into place and we've talked a lot about how there have been additional responsibilities at the admin level. How has that role changed? What are they actually able to do? That kind of a thing. And now, why are we coming back before the committee and the town to say we need additional funding to do something that we said we were going to do with these other positions that we did a few years ago? So, I just think clarifying that, not only for the committee but also for the community, is really important, and I would like to see that the next time we talk about budget.
One other thought that may or may not be interesting in this regard is trying to balance the tension between administrators versus the teachers or the team members that they may oversee. It might be interesting to take a closer look at just employee turnover at different levels within the organizations, because I suspect it would be our hope that by adding a director or supervisor-level position, if we're experiencing more turnover closer to the classroom level and closer to student-facing roles, that an administrator might be able to bring somebody new up to speed and solidify the quality of our educational program if we're experiencing those. So, that may or may not be interesting to take a look at. I'd be interested to see it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Julie?
Can I ask a question about a different topic?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else on this topic?
I, yes.
Okay. No, all right, take it away.
Well, I was wondering, Marty, if you could talk about some of the newer proposed cuts with us?
Sure.
I have other questions about that, but there were, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, you can talk about them generally, but one of the things I was curious about was how some of them in particular, you felt like were going to impact kids and their families. And the ones that stood out to me were the library services one, the transportation services, and then supplies. But feel free to talk about them.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the chance to come back to that list. I think schools are better when there's a full-time librarian. I mean, in a perfect world, we have a full-time librarian at both Glenbrook and Williams. Right now, we have the position split over the two schools. We'd offset it with an instructional aide. I think, you know, high-functioning libraries work to provide supplemental services to kids. They're involved with co-teaching, they're an information hub for the school, they are collecting resources for research for kids, they might be helping with sort of information literacy lessons, you know, how to discern fact from fiction. I think those are some of the things that we rely on our librarians for. And obviously, we have a collection to manage, and so those are all critical functions, you know. Candidly, if we're in a position to restore, if that's the right word, these positions that we've identified, I think that library position would be at the top of the list. The teacher at LHS, I think the impact is sort of to be determined. Like I said earlier, Principal Anders was concerned about the impact. Class signups will happen in a couple of months and we'll see how that shakes out and, you know, what the impact looks like. But, you know, I think we've made some enrollment-related reductions at the high school in recent years. This feels like it's going beyond that. Nursing services, again, I, you know, I think we, you know, nursing suites are the hub of the school as well. They provide kids with an important outlet. It's a, it's a place where kids go if they just need to reset or if they need a Band-Aid. And our nurses see hundreds of kids. We ran the contact information. We could run reports on the number of visits that our nurses have in each of their suites, and so if that's information that the committee's interested in, we could gather that for you. So, they're busy places, and so, you know, we would prefer to have that second position at LHS, just given the size of that population, but also as it gives us some flexibility when there's vacancies and absences and field trips, you know? Our schools are in a position to take some really exciting field trips, but more and more, we need to send nurses on those trips. So, that one is a challenge. Transportation services, I might defer to Mr. Mazza, you know, whether that's sort of, you know, we just gathered some efficiencies there or if that's, you know, might represent some impacts to kids.
Yeah, I don't think it'll have impact on students. I think it was specifically targeted more at summer programming and possibilities to ensure that we are running the routes efficiently and making sure that students can get there in a timely manner.
Does that mean, are you saying they're going to get there in a less timely manner?
Yeah.
Or you figured out how to do it better?
I mean, it's always dependent upon who's participating in different summer programs, so that, too, is part of it, not necessarily knowing exactly how many students we'll have engaged in services over the summer, so that, too, is a factor in trying to plan accordingly.
Okay. Can I ask you a follow-up question about the nursing? Because I have a sneaking suspicion you might be the person who would be most likely to have this information at your fingertips.
Excellent.
So, my understanding is that right now, every school has a nurse, and the floating position is housed at the high school but is also used to substitute. That's correct, right? All the other schools have their own individual.
Yes.
Okay, so if that position were to go away, my understanding is that substitute nursing is not an inexpensive endeavor. Cost-wise, what are we looking at roughly per day to bring in a nurse for either a field trip or for subbing for a school nurse? Average daily cost?
Current rate is $190 a day for a substitute nurse.
Okay. So, I'd just be curious to see where we, where we land on that, like roughly, what would we be looking? You don't have to have this number right away, but maybe for a future meeting, what kind of savings might we really be looking at versus how much of that will just end up being diverted towards substitute nursing costs?
I mean, a quick footnote is, when we did add it, we didn't really reduce the nurse sub-line because we were increasing the rate, so we still have some funding there that we haven't necessarily had to tap into. The thought was we'd eventually be able to reduce it almost down to nothing.
Yeah.
With a goal of most of our absences being covered by the additional coverage nurse.
Okay.
But things happen and don't always go to plan, so we have had to tap into that in the past, but I can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Another follow-up with the nursing, if I may. I think I heard in there that we, you know, with taking out the float, there could be replacement with a health aide? What is a health aide?
Would be someone kind of who can take students in, enter information into the health services software, kind of do a preliminary assessment, information gathering from the student before they actually engage with the nurse.
Is this a medical assistant or is this a...
I think it'd be more clerical in nature, not necessarily medical background.
Okay.
There's a lot of paperwork responsibilities, obviously, as you know, and...
I've heard with medicine, a couple papers.
So, that's something that we have to be, that there's a chunk of it that person could take on.
Jamie?
We ready to jump? Can we jump subjects quick?
Well, questions about this one a little further.
Can you do the supplies?
Yeah, that was what I wanted to do. Supplies, we have a per-people allocation that we give to each of the six schools, and this would trim that per-people allocation. Mr. Mazza can give us the specific figures.
Yeah, I mean, we, some years ago, we added a consumable per-student amount of $10 on top of an allocation that we give to each school for supplies. The total supply budget is approximately $425,000. It does cover costs beyond supplies at various levels, travel, postage, some software, maybe hardware costs, but most of it is in consumable supplies. So, we reduced it by $5 per student and spread it out over all schools.
Okay. Can I, can I?
Julie, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Well, I had two.
Yeah.
Okay. So, on that one, just like, how do we think it's going to play out in the classroom? Is this like...
The reason we, yeah, the reason we added the per-people allocation at each of the six schools was to relieve the burden that of, have teachers to ask families to send in supplies, consumable supplies. And so, we felt like we wanted to, you know, take on the, we have an appropriate responsibility to provide general classroom supplies. You know, if there's something particular that an individual student needs, then that's different, but general classroom supplies, we want to make sure that we take care of that.
Yeah.
So, it could, you know, it's going to roll back some of the progress that we made in not asking parents to send in boxes of Kleenex.
Okay, yeah. I came, we came from a school district where there was a huge ask every year and the teachers had to constantly be on top of it, so. My other question was just, on the ones where you said, I think at least the nursing and then maybe one of the other things, oh, the nursing and the library services, where you're talking about replacing with someone, is that hiring a new position or that's just reallocating somebody who's...
It would be, it would be hiring a new position. That's why the library savings, there's only a $29,000 net savings. It's the net of reducing the position and adding an instructional aide into that space.
Okay.
I'm just going to echo what you said earlier about this being kind of one of the first biggest hurts in adding in these additional reductions. As a person who has spent an outsized amount of time in my life... amount of time in my life in libraries, they have a significant impact. And removing a librarian from the middle school while having it at the elementary level and at the high school level, and then having that gap in those years that are critical for development of research skills, of learning to analyze sources, of reading, is really critical. So that is something for us to be very, very thoughtful about as well as we move forward.
Mary. Marty, you did mention this, but I want to say it one more time, that librarians, they act as a protector of the resources that we've invested in. So in not having a certified librarian, I don't know the, you know, requirements for getting the library aide job, if you need to have a background in library science or whatever. But are we going to expect that materials will still be cared for? And, you know, that is a concern of mine. And does the current librarian act as a media specialist in terms of managing Chromebooks or anything like that?
Yes.
I don't believe so.
Can I ask one more question? And this may be something for, you know, beyond the scope of right now. You know, we were talking about the growth at 3.42, and now we're down to 3.0 after talking with the town. And you mentioned that even at 3.0, that we're in rough waters. That, are we, from your conversation, you know, when we're taking these decisions into account, did they allude to the possibility of coming to us saying that we might need to go below 3.0?
I think, I think that 3.0 is the floor. I haven't heard any reports that we would need to go beyond that.
Okay.
I'm hopeful that, you know, maybe, I think we still need to continue our conversations with the select board and with the town officials. I think that's part of the basic decision before the school committee right now, is to think about whether or not you want this budget to fit inside that 3% increase that has been conveyed to us. Or do you feel like that's something you can't in good conscience stand for, and you want to submit a different budget, you know, that above the 3% increase to the general fund? I think that's really, you know, one of the fundamental decisions.
Okay.
But it can't be decided tonight necessarily, but I think that's a key consideration.
Jamie?
Is it fair to say, asking a question I know the answer to, that we are going to be asking from supplies, from athletics, from transportation, that we're going to be asking, potentially asking, more from families over the course of this next year? So just so families are aware of, the ask, this budget right now is essentially set up to where those asks are going to go from X to above X.
We haven't, we're not planning for or projecting fee increases, but that's a decision that's still in front of the school committee. But this budget doesn't project that.
And supplies is very arbitrary in that we don't know what we're going to be asked for, and that's our job as a parent, you know, we're going to, you know, supply this or not. But on the other things, you know, the potential for that to be something that could be, could be an ask from the parents, and, you know, anybody participating in this town could be coming.
Yeah, I would like to get us to a place where we're not, so we're not reliant on those asks. And I think this doesn't advance that for sure. It doesn't put us in a position to roll back athletic fees. It doesn't put us in a position to lessen the generosity of the big booster clubs, you know. So, yeah, that's, and I know that's been important to this committee, that they, they're very sensitive. This committee, I know, is very sensitive to, you know, the asks that we often have of families, you know. So I think that's important.
Can I jump subjects?
Yes.
I think Julie had been waiting to jump subjects. Oh, I wasn't. I was going to say on the fees thing, I think it would be a really tough pill to swallow to go to families and say, you know, we're, we are going to give you less than what we know, we think in our judgment you deserve, and then also, we're going to ask you to pay more for it. So I appreciate keeping the fees the same.
Correct. But in order to keep level service, you have to increase the fees, or you got to, our budget becomes bigger of the deficit, just FYI. So everybody understands that from public too, is if we don't move with the fees, that means we got to take from somewhere else. It's the budget. I mean, so.
Part of it might be just exploring efficiencies too, in terms of game management or transportation. So those are things that don't necessarily impact the experience of a student athlete, but it might put more demands on, you know, a smaller number of people running games.
So essentially, instead of sending on a charter bus, we send on a yellow bus, or ask the parent to drive the student athlete to a game in Boston or in wherever. So that's definitely a reasonable way to manage costs.
Yeah.
These are tough choices.
Yes. Jumping subjects.
Yeah, can I jump subjects? What, I just, number one, everyone from the music community, they were amazing. I am just beyond confused. What is music excellence in town of Long Meadow? Because I heard one group say it's participants. The other felt more like it was excellence, right? Like, we have 10 amazing kids. We had some pretty amazing ones. We had one that kept, said in college, that obviously still interested in music. Is it, we get 50% of the students involved in participating in music? Is that, do we have anything that defines what excellence in music in Long Meadow even is? Because it doesn't seem like we're really connected as to what that is.
Not in terms of numbers, but, you know, we want a vibrant program. We're really pleased to see signups increase at the elementary level. We hope that's a new normal. And if we're sending 100 kids a year off to the middle school, having had a fifth-grade band experience, that's fantastic. That's a sign of excellence.
But then high school, if their numbers are down by 50%, it's that, I mean, that is, the only reason why I'm asking is because I'm kind of sitting back going, what is excellence? I mean, from, and I think maybe as a high school community or as a, you know, our community going, what is from each of these different things? As I look at it on each different sport. Excellence in lacrosse is to go from 1,000 kids down to 12, and none of them participate. Excellence in this next sport, it's this. Excellence in this next one, it's everybody participating in cross-country, and there's a wonderful community in cross-country. I didn't really hear, like, everyone agree on that side of it, you know, but you kind of go from what is excellence? Is it having a banner in the high school auditorium, or is it having the email that we got, that wonderful students did great things in music? Is it having more people on there? And how many is too many?
I think they're together. I think if you have a breadth of program, you're going to achieve the excellence in terms of banners and honors and awards and trophies and that kind. So, and it's, you know, it's a part of our curriculum program. It's during the school day, so we want to give as many kids access to it as possible. And it's, I wouldn't want us to have a program that whittles down participation. We want a breadth of participation. And I think that's part of the reason at the high school last year, we added like a guitar class. And it's, you know, there's opportunities for kids to access the music program in a variety of ways. If they're not, if they're not a vocalist, we give them opportunities, you know, instrumental opportunities, either brass percussion, wind.
Again, yeah, I guess I was just saying more from an overall, that is not the athletic world, though. That's what's interesting. Like, so it's a whole, but it's different, but only, you know, a handful of sports, that that's the atmosphere where it doesn't care about participation. It's only about a very select small few, you know. But it sounded like we were a select small few, but we were also participation. I think narrowing that down kind of defines your staffing levels and what we're trying to accomplish. We don't seem to be, have the same goals. So if we don't have the same goals, we don't know what the staffing should be. We don't know what's appropriate. We don't know whether this should stay or not, based off of what we're, like, if our goal is to have every single kid involved in music, we need more music teachers, right?
Like, all of our music educators and administrators, more students participating is better.
Okay.
And I would add to that, that, a couple of things. One, I think that when we see numbers at the higher grades being a little bit lower now, we also have to remember that part of that is connected to a decline that we saw from a pandemic, and that those numbers are beginning to rebound. And so, just for that note, a big thank you to both our elementary educators in the music department, but also at our high school and middle school level, because I, so all of my kids have done music all the way through, starting, well, my son started playing violin when he was in kindergarten and came into the school already playing it, and then the other ones all picked up instruments right away when they were offered. And just remembering that that music is such a big component of their lives, and what I've seen this last year with kids at the high school level in the music department, is reaching out and those connections that are happening, where they're making trips to visit middle school classrooms, to visit and talk with elementary classrooms, to have those mentorship kind of programs up and running again, and to have our, all of our music department staff making those connections across the grades, is all working together to boost our numbers. And those are going to be, that's just bringing more music to more students each year. So I do think we'll start to see at the higher grades, those numbers that are foundational in the elementary school begin to ripple up as well.
I think this also, oh, sorry, did you want to?
Yeah, Mary, and then Michaela, and then Adam.
Well, I think, is it me first?
Yes. Sorry, that's why I think so.
I just, I think it would be helpful to have some more information about teacher schedules. I'm not talking about what music does for kids, or what, you know, I think we can probably all agree that any cuts to music and art is not something that anyone wants to see. But do we need the number of positions that we have? Hearing from our music educators that we have holes in our schedule, that is not okay. We cannot pay teacher salaries to people who are subbing for teachers who are absent. It's just not fiscally responsible, which is a very cold-hearted, like, sort of, very black and white thing. But if we have too many teachers for the number of periods and students that we're serving, then is that the case? Because we are hearing multiple stories from folks who have come forward, and I don't know the answer. So when you come back the next time, it would be very helpful to have some more information about how our elementary educators are being used in terms of what their teaching roles are.
I think at a very high level, we can say that they have capacity and remember their schedule to deliver the band services that were, that are needed at fifth grade. Now, having said that, I think, you know, having co-teachers or an extra set of hands would be helpful to every teacher at every grade level and every discipline. And so, that's always a benefit. And, you know, if the, if the committee, you know, would like us to take another look at that, and would like us to restore that position, certainly, we would want to put together schedules that promote that, that collaboration and promote that, you know, that co-teaching model, you know, that, that's really what it would allow. But again, that's something.
Is it necessary? I don't, I, like, I don't know. And that's what I'm asking you. So I know that this was in your first round of, like, we can definitely get rid of this. I mean, I know that you don't feel like we can definitely get rid of any of it. But so that, you know, we're put in this position of having to say, to balance, like, librarian. We haven't even talked about elementary literacy adoption yet, but I will be asking about that later. And I just feel like, you know, when we think about the priorities of the school committee, can we literally afford to have a co-teaching model in some departments and not others? And I hope that I, and the thing is, I mean, the music program is incredibly valuable to our community. People came in droves here and are still here to talk about it. So I don't, you know, is this a priority of our community? And so, yes, then we do fund two teachers per period for a small number of students. I, like, we need more information to make an educated decision about that. I don't feel like I have all the information.
Michaela?
I actually was going to say, ask, bring up a similar concern, just about, you know, hearing about the schedules with the music teachers. And first, I want to say that every single person who spoke about the music program, the takeaway I heard was that it's a vertical program that has served so many kids, and that it's excellent, and that everybody's passionate about it. So I think that's something I would like more information about, like, why, I mean, not using that effectively. Why was there the misinformation between the general music teachers and the families of band students and band students themselves? And especially, like, I heard people talking about it being a vertical program, and how can we make it more, you know, across the schools, as we've talked about in other subjects?
Thank you. Adam?
From what I heard, it doesn't seem like people really understood the role that the band director had. And kind of going back to what Julie and Mary were saying, having that role clearly defined might help people swallow that pill. Again, no one wants to get rid of anyone in music. But, I mean, again, from what we're hearing from the music teachers, it seems like this is an area where we're building the evidence that, you know, compared to getting, you know, having to sacrifice a librarian position, that this might be something that would not affect student education as much.
Jamie?
Yep. Marty, just in whenever you come back on this too, just from factual information, because I think we're all dealing kind of in non-faxes, is really over the last 13 years, is participation in high school down by, is that, was that real, like, down by 50%? One gentleman had mentioned. Is it not? And what is the trend, up and down? Because everyone who kind of got before us has been here the last 13 years. So it kind of made me just sit back and go, okay, these 13-year period, so it all becomes back to passion. And I have brought up her name many, many times, is one of the best teachers in this district. You go to Mrs. Bridges and Mrs. Quirk, and you walk in there, and the passion is there. And they're amazing, you know, and they bring it to a level up here that if you can bring the whole organization, organization, district, up to that level, it empowers everybody, and it makes everything better. Why, is, number one, is that real? And if it is real, why, like, just some bullet points, like, why? Like, what happened? You don't go down by 50%, or those are just made up numbers. I don't know what's not made up and what is, so.
Yeah, I think part of it, and we could bring you back some specifics on this, I think part of it is, you know, how much of what was described was sort of the after-effects of COVID, and how much of it are we going to, how much bounce back will there be? I think, remember, in the 2021 school year, you know, we were, we were nearly fully remote. And so, it really put a crimp on the music experience of kids. And so, you know, maybe there's a group of kids who, in those formative middle school years, where you really learn your interests, and you learn who you are, and what you love, and what you don't like, they just didn't have that same experience. So I think.
That's real.
I want to, yeah, I mean, so I think, I want to get the committee some information on, you know, what are the historic numbers, and if they're the enrollment patterns that we're seeing, how much of it it's attributable to COVID experiences, and then how much of it is other factors at work. I think kids are juggling more than ever. I think it's, you know, it's a different world. It's, kids are juggling, there's more demands on them in terms of sports and academics. And it's, as we've seen, through our participation with challenge success, kids have lots on their plates.
Yeah.
Julie?
Well, I just, maybe you answered a little bit of this, but somebody said something about music in Long Meadow, especially in the high school years, being more like an exceptional kids pursuit now. And so I think as you think about the numbers and what's changed, understanding, like, whether we've lost across the music programs, or whether we're losing kids who are, you know, are, want to participate but at a less committed level than, like, honors musical program.
Other questions related to?
Very multi-variable subject, and it's important to remember the logical fallacy post hoc, ergo, propter hoc. Correlation is not causation here. To say that you can draw a direct line from the teachers that we have, who, as I understand, are all exceptional teachers, to the participation levels, I think is a dangerous conclusion.
Absolutely. Andrew?
Just sort of, just to kind of pinpoint off what both Julie and Adam just said, I think as a student, and I, in full context, I don't take any music classes. All my extra, all of my electives are in the business department. But as an outside student looking in to the music department, I think you kind, we have, as students at the high school level especially, this view that music is a very big time commitment, and it's for students who are exceptional. And if we're trying to increase the number of students we want in this program, and we want to find their passion, we don't have to say that the, that music is exceptional in Long Meadow. And I think this is causing, and there's plenty of opportunities still for students who don't need to, you know, be at that high school multiple times a week at night to take, to, you know, go through rehearsals. That, that option is already there, but how do we inform students that you don't need to, you know, be exceptional in music to take these classes? You can still. take these classes? You can still, you can still find your passion in music and you can still be on a sports team and kind of relax at night. You don't need to be in rehearsals. And I just think we need to change our narrative a little bit, that it doesn't always have to be about excellence in the music program. And I don't think it is, but I think it has kind of looking to the fishbowl, that's where my mind immediately goes.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense. And I know this goes beyond like, discussion, but it brings me back to kind of like the vision of the graduate and like what, and this is a little bit Jamie's question about excellence versus participation. Like what are we aiming for in terms of well-rounded students, you know?
An instrument in every kid's hand.
At all times.
Gonna need a lot of teachers.
Andrew, really well said. I mean, I think on the, on the academic side, we, we're trying to change the narrative around, you know, promoting and focus on learning and engagement, enjoy and passion and self-direction, right? And so, you know, like that needs to cut across athletics, you know, all academic areas, all grades and even music. And I, I think it's, I think it's well said. We, we want a program that is engaging for kids and gives them that, that lifetime experience.
Mackay?
I think too, it also ties into the universal design for learning the music program. I think it's so important for, you know, there's certain kids that that's where they really shine and to make sure that they start young and that we have a good program. Um, but also when we think about, you know, we've talked so much about mental health and kids struggling behaviorally, it's an outlet. So yeah, not everybody, we should be, you know, positively reinforcing that. You don't have to be excellent, but it is an outlet, um, for everyone.
All right. Seeing no other music discussion. Did have one other thing that I would like to throw out there and, and, and this will be a moment where I'm glad that you all have hung in there for as long as you have. Um, Mr. Matias, could I ask if you could clarify some information, um, about the, um, student support teachers for Title I? Um, I think if I remember hearing correctly, that is at your school currently, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering, I, I know that we're seeing that reduction in Title I funds go down 38%. And so I, I'm really curious if you could just talk to us more about what that, those particular two line item cuts are going to look like? What is the impact we're seeing? Are those specific FTE positions? Are they, what specifically are we looking at?
Uh, yes, specific FTE positions. Um, if it's a half position at Wolf Swamp, that would be, we have full-time right now, student support specialists, which really works with our students, um, socially, behaviorally, um, in a really proactive role. Um, so losing either that whole position or half of that position, um, is, is a huge hit to us. Um, we have that benefit of having that, uh, funding and having that position. Um, and it's been a huge help to us over the course of the last two and a half years. Um, so it's, it's a little nerve wracking to think what it's going to be like without that. Um, and that's, it's, it's gonna be tough.
So with these two line items that we have here, because those are not small amounts of money, um, exactly how many staff members are associated with these? Do we have numbers for that?
So currently the Title I grant funds two FTE positions. There's a full-time at each of the Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook. This year's grant is approximately 237,000. The preliminary information we received from the state is that we are looking at about 111,000 or so next year, maybe 115. So what's included in the budget is a reduction of point five of each of the two positions that are funded by the Title I grant. So both Glenbrook and Wolf Swamp will have a point five student support specialist.
Okay. So right now there are two positions. One is at Wolf Swamp, one is at Glenbrook.
Correct.
There would be still two positions, but they would each go down to half-time at each school. And that's what these numbers reflect. Um, when it says supports and services, what does that include?
I mean, it's not just salaries. We had to scale back other related costs that the grant provides for, materials, professional development, contracted services. So again, I think, um, the superintendent mentioned at the last meeting, it's really federal census data that apparently drives the amount of funding we receive. And it is based off of the 2022, uh, low income numbers for Long Meadow, which apparently took, um, decreased about 30 or 40 students. Our local data is not indicating that. We've seen a pretty consistent, uh, percentage of eligibility and frame-reduced meals for the last five years, but our funding in Title I definitely has been, uh, fluctuating over the last three years.
Okay. Um, so no, I don't, I didn't see anybody from Glenbrook tonight, right? No, Michaela's not here. Okay. Um.
Can I just clarify that point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Our local data does not corroborate the census data.
It does not. I, again, I, I would defer to Dr. Nelson because she did contact the state, but based on what the state has provided us, it looks like over the last three years. So the census data from 2020, 2021 and 2022 is basically went from like 93 students to 130, down to 80-something over the, that three-year period. Our data locally has been consistent. We have not seen any real fluctuation. If anything, we're seeing incremental increases year after year, small, but an increase. No, I don't recall seeing a decrease in the last five to 10 years.
Is there any recourse for an audit to verify?
I mean, we're dealing with the federal government. It's a federal grant, so.
It'd be a long time.
You most certainly can, uh, try to revisit it with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. I, I don't know that we will be very successful. We did experience this two years ago. Fortunately, we had carryover funds in the grant from the previous year that allowed us to maintain staffing without reductions. We're not, we don't have that ability. We're allowed to do it once every three years. Additionally, we're spending the money this year. It was really carryover from COVID. When we weren't able to expend all of our grant funds in those years, the federal government and the state gave us a little more latitude. But now we're required to spend them in a more timely manner. And so this, FY25, we're actually having to see reductions associated to the program because the funding is decreasing.
So I'm gonna ask you to answer, and I realize you're not answering for Glenbrook, but I suspect that A, I already know the answer and B, um, that it is the same for both. Um, moving from a full-time, have you seen a reduction in student, direct student support that would justify moving this down to a half FTE as opposed to, like, what level of stu-, this is direct student support that we're seeing happen here. If the numbers that the government has are saying that we have this many fewer students, are you seeing evidence of that? Or are you seeing that there is a full-time usage of this direct student support happening at your school?
Definitely a full-time usage. And I, and I would venture to say that, uh, Nicole Allen would say the same thing, um, at Glenbrook.
Okay. Thank you. This one, this one is very concerning.
Our DUCs school profiles show a gradual increase in the number of students who are identified as, as low income. And that's a trend that's been going on for probably 15 years at that.
Oh, sorry.
So with the Title I funding, is this like a one-year thing or you think long-term, we're gonna be losing that funding? Like this isn't a position next year when they look at the census di- data from?
I wish I knew. I mean, if trends are anything we go by, it might bounce back for FY26. Um, so I, I really can't say. I, I don't know what is driving, like, I don't know what data they're collecting in terms of census information that would be showing such a, a swing over multiple years. Because like I said, our, our local data does not support that.
So can I ask, are we, are we required to only use Title I funding for these positions? Or can we fill these positions?
We could.
I realize that I'm asking about it in a year where we're also talking about all this money that is currently stressing us out with the budget.
We could. If the funding were to rebound though, you would not be able to then move that portion back to the grant. There is something called supplanting, in which you cannot transfer positions that have been being funded by the general fund to the grant.
Okay. So if we did fund it, we will be funding it moving forward.
That was smart of them.
It also would expect that the services would be what are being provided outside of what you provide to all the schools.
Okay. So it wouldn't be something that we could fill in for a year, for example?
Could, but it would potentially create a problem in subsequent years if the funding were to rebound.
Okay. That's good. All right.
Can I ask a follow-up question? But do we have enough money in, that, that, is, is this an issue?
Well, the school kind of wants to prioritize.
But you have a, do you have a, is one of your revolving accounts, nothing?
Yeah, it would have to come from other adjustments that we would make as part of the budget.
I was just trying to figure out like what do we got. So can we take money from, so we cannot take money from any of the revolving and supply? No. Okay. Got it.
Okay. Um, Mary?
Yeah.
And then Michaela.
So different topics, so if we're continuing.
Oh, is it?
I wonder, could I, could I kindly ask, can we get Springer, our, our admin team?
Please, yes. Go, go home. Yes.
Unless some of the questions coming up are-
Yeah.
Literacy?
Yeah.
Beth, if you can hang back, is that? Can everybody else lose? Is it okay?
Go ahead. Go home. So, I knew what you were saying too.
I think we're talking the same thing.
If you're both talking about literacy, let's do that first then. Is that also the topic you had?
I mean, it is something that I obviously always like to talk about, so kind of it.
I do want to put a small bug in it once or two, that it is, um, yep, I'm reading that right, nine, 10. So we'll remember that we are coming back in another week, um, to also continue these. And also, we do have somebody waiting for us to move out of the public hearing and into the regular portion of the meeting so that they can present and talk as well.
I think we have the same thing. It, they, go ahead.
I guess I'll just make a statement that I really feel strongly about funding the elementary literacy adoption. And, you know, I think in our budget, it's, it's listed as an additional consideration. And I just feel that a strong elementary literacy program is really fundamental to a sound educational program. And I, I understand why it is not in the actual budget, but I am wary about whether or not we will be able to fund this given all of the other considerations.
Can I take an initial crack? And then I, I think, um, we agree. I mean, we have teams of educators under best leadership that have mobilized and are excited to consider next steps. I think we, we need to think about what our options are. I think there will be some options in front of us. I think, you know, perhaps with end-of-year funds, um, that's, that's a, that's a big perhaps. Perhaps with revolving account. Um, those two were skinny there, I'd say. The funds that the governor has earmarked, um, we remain hopeful for. And then we've had some preliminary conversations with the town manager about a, a town meeting warrant to fund the adoption. So we, we really, uh, couldn't agree more that it's critical that we-
I just felt, I felt like it would be remiss if I didn't say that again. I know I keep saying this, but I just really, I just wanted you to hear me say that again.
I think, I think the whole committee as a whole is, this will happen this year. Elementary literacy is, is critical.
So it is this year?
How?
Okay.
Where exactly?
The governor, I didn't know if those would be available before, like for example, the roof on Wolf Swamp, or not, the center would be picked.
It's the accelerated, accelerated.
Yeah, exactly.
The extra accelerated.
We've got all these reading is fundamental jokes in here and it's just, yeah, you gotta deliver.
Yes. Um, I forget who was going next. Were you talking about literacy as well? Because you were next or did you want to?
Um, no, I, I had something.
Something else. Did?
I just, it's the same exact thing. It's, it's a matter of trying to figure out how to piece, piece this together over time, whether it's using some of the governors, a combination of two warrants, whatever it may be. It's going to be a lot of heavy lifting outside of this. It doesn't fit in here. We all know it. So kind of getting to the community and saying, hey, this is coming, you know, May 14th, you know, whether it's a warrant or whether, where this may come from. Um, that funding source can't be from the $40 million that they're gonna give us to run the schools. So.
And I'm sure part of that is based on, we're not sure which program at this point yet. So it's hard to put something into the budget when we don't know exactly what it's gonna cost at this point. We have very broad parameters at the moment.
What do we say, 300 to 800?
Yeah, these are very big differences.
250 to 875.
250 to 875. That's a wide range.
It rolls off the tongue.
Keep working this way.
All right. Uh, Michaela?
Well, I was wondering if you could just share with us where you are with the, um, committee, just-
Sure. So, or in the month of January, we conducted our site visits. So we started with 11 programs, narrowed it down to three that we went on to site visits. This past Friday, the committee reconvened once again. We narrowed it down to two programs that we're going to be piloting. Um, the expectation is to begin piloting one program March 2nd through Friday, March 24th, I believe. I, I know the date's wrong, March 28th, the day before, um, holiday break for Good Friday. And then we will give a week off and then do another, um, include, we, you know, there's two days that each grade level will be testing for MCAS. So we have that window built in, April vacation, but be wrapped up the end of April so that we can make a recommendation to you all, um, if we need to do before-town meeting or May 28th. But we should be in the timeline to make a recommendation, an informed recommendation prior to town meeting.
Exciting.
It's really exciting. And I know Marty was able to pop into part of the meeting on Friday and it was just really incredible work and conversation and excitement about the direction that we're potentially moving in.
A lot of hard work. Thank you for that.
Are you able to say what the two pilot programs are?
So we've narrowed it down to Amplify CKLA and American Reading Company, which is ARC Core.
Can I just have a question about that comment on there? So, so we won't know exactly how much it's gonna cost until like pretty close to town meeting?
Because, um, the first program that we're going to pilot is the lesser expensive. And it's not because of the price, it's because they could get the materials to us sooner. Um, we won't pilot the more expensive one until April. Um, and we certainly, we're, we have, uh, the teacher, the piloting teachers will be providing feedback to us every single day, quantitative feedback. Like, we want to get the emotion out and really just break it down to, um,
Yeah.
what's, what we need to do. We'll have a lot of evidence and a lot of data, um, to sort through to inform our decision, but we won't.
Okay. I'm just wondering, so then Tom, but we'll know well before then whether, will we, I mean, I know it's all dependent on the price, but how will we know? At what point will we know whether we need to ask the town for money and we need to bring it up as a warrant?
So town warrant has been put in by the end of this month. Um, we've got a few weeks left before we need to submit a town warrant, um, article, which-
But we won't know how much we're submitting for, right? I'm just, I'm just wondering in terms of, not so much the mechanics, but more like talking to people about it.
Yeah.
We'll have a small window of time to talk to people about what we're trying to do.
Yeah. I mean, I think we can start talking now about why it is so important that we make this investment and what that means. Um, and, and talk about the process and where it is. And then yes, the numbers piece is gonna come in a little bit close to the wire for discussion.
Talking to the town manager about the mechanics of that and, you know, whether or not the, we can meet the warrant submission deadline and then subsequent to that, um, identify, identify an amount and, you know, whether they'll permit an up-to mechanism is to be determined.
If they want to, then we have to choose without piloting?
The alternative would be if, if, if town meeting is our only option, a special town meeting wouldn't be ruled out. That's, that's a possibility. Rather not go that route, but, um, that's a possibility. I think, you know, there is a lot of interest in this among our educators and their families. And, and I know this committee is eager to learn more and find out about which direction we're going. And Beth's doing a great job with it. And it was the best meeting of the year that I went into with our educators talking about this, you know, excluding this one, but, but.
Close second.
I was hurt.
Me too.
I know also that curriculum sub is in the process of trying to get something out in books too. So we'll, we'll hopefully maybe be able to hear even more details when we get to do that. All right. Any last things that are necessary to talk about tonight related to budget? And/or can we push till next week? Yes.
I just have a question about school choice.
Yes.
When do we make the decision about school choice?
Usually once we have some stronger numbers for enrollment, kindergarten enrollment, um, Marchish, am I remembering that correctly?
The timeline for school choice, Diane?
MECO and school choice.
It's usually, uh, the last meeting- It's usually the last meeting of February, first meeting in March is usually when we bring a recommendation.
There's gonna be a bunch of other variables that will have impacts one way or another over, after we actually say yes to it, you know, from, from busing, like we said athletics, there's other ancillary departments that all have that, including school choice program. So it does have an impact on our budget.
Yeah, that's why, it's just looking, because, you know, it's like if you look at the current enrollment in kindergarten versus twelfth grade, like it's just kind of, well, could we, could we expand school choice positions?
I think we're graduating seven choice students this year, if I remember correctly. And so that's a baseline, that's sort of a jumping off point to consider whether or not you just replace that. And then if there's, there's airline seats available, you might want.
I'm changing class sizes too, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and usually it's a pretty long fruitful discussion about philosophy. And our philosophy as a department last year, as a committee, was fruitful, and it was more about how do we create a better environment, include more children that want to come? And that was part of it, and not make it a budgeting decision, right?
Right.
Because if we bring in a whole bunch of people, you, you don't want to make your budget that way. And it was, we discussed it, and, you know, Marty and Tom came back and said, I would do here, here, and here. And I think we added a few here and there and said, no, push this a little bit and give it a try. Not for budgeting reasons, for, hey, let's, you know, add some more into ninth grade. And I think we did sixth grade last year. So it's, it's not huge budget wise, but it does have an impact, so.
All right, I'm gonna officially move us on and close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We are headed into our regularly scheduled meeting, and we will begin there with correspondence. Mary?
The following correspondence will be recorded. An email from Mr. Kurt Friedman dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, regarding an educational, educational presentation for students on solar panels. An email from Mr. Mitchell Pullman dated February first, twenty twenty-four, regarding naming a school facility for Foster Fucalo.
All right, thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Oh, she is, I'm sorry, sorry Julie, and Julie?
Sorry.
Thought she stepped out of the room, you might need to ask her to unmute.
I think she said yes.
She said yes.
Oh, she did, thank you, oh, sorry, thank you, didn't hear you, sorry. Okay, visitor comments, are there any visitor comments on any other topics tonight? I'm not seeing anyone at home, I think we are good. School committee announcements and recognitions. Seeing none, we will move forward into business with guests for our very, very patient Ms. Liz Bone for the Town's Energy and Sustainability Committee is here tonight to talk to us about composting at the schools. Welcome, and thank you very much for your patience.
No problem, I am used to it.
It was an exciting night.
Yes, oh yeah. I also wanted to say that besides being here for the energy committee, I do this for a living. I work for the town of Islam Meadow, I'm the recycling coordinator there. So this is what I did in Islam Meadow at their schools. And I thought I could just share the process in which we brought organic composting to the schools, and it's been really successful, so I thought we would talk about what we could do here.
All right.
I will follow your lead. I'll follow your lead, just let me know when you'd like to advance.
Sure. Okay, so in twenty twenty-two, in November, the, the state passed organics ban to lower the threshold of amount of organics that an institution, a school, a restaurant can produce or have out the back end. So right now, it is half a ton per week. And so that does affect big institutions, universities. So by law, they need to do something with their food waste, whether it's composting, donating, not producing as much. And so in Islam Meadow, we decided as a town, and I work for the health department, or the health department, that we would start to tackle this, because in a few years, it will be a total food waste ban. And so then everyone will have to get on board, and the sooner you get on board, the more money and grants, things that you can utilize. Anyway, so I started off, so we decided that we were going to start composting at all the schools. And that's about, if you think about how much half a ton is, that's a thousand pounds. And we have one school in, in Islam Meadow that does about, just one school does twelve hundred pounds per month. So we have five schools, that's a lot. So what we did was I met with the, the school staff, the superintendent, and the principals, and we discussed exactly what we were planning to do. And then I met with the custodial staff and the food service staff, because they're an integral part of the process, because it's basically happening in the cafeteria. We had the, the okay by the town manager, and the environmental club is also very good to work with in the school. We have, I think in the high school, we have a good environmental club. And the first step is to get a baseline of trash and recycling done at the schools, and they can do that. And your hauler in Long Meadow is waste management. And then if the town, who I know they are looking for somebody like a recycling coordinator or sustainability coordinator, would work with you, they have grant funds that they can use to help start this program up here. And it would also be in purchasing some equipment. So sometimes just a trash barrel is not good enough. You need like signs and special containers. And for the food service company, the best way to do it is to get all your things either compostable or reusable. So right now, I'm sure that there are some things in school that come in like black plastic cups or something like that. So finding a good way to switch out of those things, and it might be a little bit more expensive, but down the line, like if you're using reusable silverware, eventually it will pay off, because you're not, you're not buying a thousand count a week. And then you would contract with the organics hauler. In Islam Meadow, we contracted with a company called Commonwealth Sustainability, and they're in Ludlow. And they pick up each week and bring it to a compost facility in Ellington, Connecticut. And then I started preparing the students and the custodians. So I made slides, I made signs, I had discussions with the principal on how to roll it out. And then I started at an elementary school, and their youngest elementary school is K through second. And so I was there about ten weeks, every day in the lunch, just showing them with the help of the custodian, the principal, and the lunchroom staff how to do it. And they definitely got the hang of it, but you have to do it, you know, like a few, at least a month, because each lunch is different. So each lunch is gonna come with something else that they need to recycle or different food, so they won't know where to go. So once they get used to doing that, having like pizza on a Friday, they'll know that what, where the pizza goes the next Friday. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. And also, if you want to, if you want to start donations, work with Rachel's table. They come and pick it up on Friday, you just keep it in the school's fridge or freezer, and they'll come and pick up extra food that the kids don't eat. So a lot of times, like at Center School, we used to have a share table, and we would put that food in the fridge after the lunch, and then Rachel's table would come and get it. So something like that. Okay, next, okay. So our success, so this is just some data. So I started from the point of view that they did not recycle at all in the cafeteria. Everything was going in the trash. And we got a baseline for the trash from our trash company, of how much was going, how much we were picking up. And there's a statistics of fifty-one percent of their school waste is from the cafeteria. So I, I just did the numbers to figure out how much it was actually coming out of the cafeteria. So this is our school, the youngest school where I was at for the longest, and started the program for the whole year, they composted almost fifteen thousand pounds of food. And it's pretty big numbers of diverting all that stuff from trash. When you look at their trash can now, it's like not even five pounds every lunch. Going from the high school, they had about ten trash barrels in around the whole cafeteria, and now they have one. Okay. This is just a picture of our elementary school, this was a model school. They, the, the staff, the custodian, the principal, all the kids are so enthusiastic. Kids actually sign up every day to help out at the composting line, and we have to turn them away. I don't know what it is about it. But they, the custodian thought it would be a good idea to put some, like lines around the side, just because to keep some order. So kids come up at the end, they put their silverware, because this is a school that uses silverware, in the black buckets. There would be a milk pour off, but it's just not there in that picture. They'd pour off their liquids, empty their milk, put their milk cartons in the next container, put their trash in the black little container, the compost in the next one, the recycling in the next one, bring their tray to the window, and put any donations off to the side on a donation table. Okay, next. This was our middle school, a lot of kids in the middle school, about six hundred, seven hundred kids in this one school, so it's very chaotic. So we had to do two-sided, and they would come up and do, basically do the same thing, pour off their liquids, milk cartons, trash, container, compost, bring the tray. The middle school needed a little bit more supervision, just because they're enthusiastically active, I guess. I don't know if that's a good word to put, or a good way to say it. Okay, next. So the high school, Islam Meadow is a little different, they have two cafeterias, so it's very hard to monitor. But if they only had one cafeteria, I would also suggest putting two stations back to back, so there are so many kids at lunch, and they could go up the sides and be monitored like one by one person. And in all these circumstances, the custodian is really kind of there watching, as they do anyway for the lunchtimes. If you go to any of the schools at lunch, the custodian is there just monitoring things anyway. Okay, so just some questions that I've gotten in the past, is it going to smell? It's not going to smell, they, they put the compost in a plastic, clear plastic bag, and then it is put in a, like a tote and put outside with a lock. It's picked up once a week, you guys wouldn't be composting in the summer, so if you're worried about that, you know, it's not gonna be there. As I said, for the help, you know, older kids and older elementary school kids like, might like to help. But I would say if the custodian is really someone who's there anyway, who's monitoring, but in the beginning, you're going to need some principals, maybe a teacher, whoever's like in the cafeteria anyway, helping out, just to assist. And, and then how much would it cost? Our hauler charges nine fifty to pick up a thirty-five gallon tote. And the elementary school had three, so it's really not that much. And the town does have grants through the DEP, and those grants can be used for equipment, they can be used for a part-time person to help set up programs, and also signs. And these are the signs that I made for, to go above the trash cans or on the trash cans. And I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
How did, oh. How did it work with the conversion? I mean, for waste management, usually it's by weight, isn't it, not by volume?
Yes.
So the conversion from weight to volume for composting, what was the cost offset at East Long Meadow?
So, so what happens with the trash is that it is, they're picking up your waste per the, the container that you have, like let's say volume. So if you have a, an eight yard container, they're picking up, they're charging you for that.
Okay.
Okay, and then they're also charging you for the weight of what's in the trash. So the trash, the weight of the trash gets reduced. And then the schools and really the town can reduce the amount, or the, reduce the size of the container. So you're paying less for the container, you can reduce how many times it's picked up per week. Like maybe the high school's picked up three times a week. And so they can reduce that and save money that way.
Possibly a way to reduce the utilities bill a little bit.
Other questions and/or comments?
I'm sorry, I'm picking over here.
Okay. In, you, you said that in our town, we don't have one of these coordinators, similar to East Long Meadow?
The town, it has an open position for it.
Okay, got it. And that's who would be like the perfect fit, kind of comparing it to what you do in East Long Meadow? Is that like the person?
I guess.
Coordinating?
Or some, or, you know, if you have somebody at each school who is an enthusiastic environmentalist.
Yeah.
They can definitely help. And as part of the Energy and Sustainability Committee, we are definitely willing to help assist in any way. I wouldn't say that I would be there at every school, every day of the year, next year, but I can try to help here and there, and at least get signs, like give you resources, mentor, anything like that.
Okay, do we have, do we have an environmental group in our school?
Meaning like a student club?
We do. We do?
Yeah.
So like that, that type of club, engage them to see if anybody wants to?
Well, that would definitely help at the high school, you just need something like that at each school, plus maybe a teacher that would be enthusiastic. I know Center has Valerie.
Yep.
She's very conscious of everything.
Have they done some small scale composting at Center? My.
We used, when I was there, we used to compost.
Yeah, a few years back.
Yeah.
Hasn't been active for a number of years.
And what comes first, the grant applications and then the program? Or do you launch and then hope you get the grants?
No, no, so it's a, it's a rolling grant. So the money is, the town gets points for all the great recycling that we do per year. So, so right now, we're filling out our application for everything that we've done in the past year for recycling and giving me all those numbers. Then we kind of apply again in June, and so it will, it will probably be around twenty thousand dollars. So this is a, if you would like to utilize some of that money, it would be a discussion with the town manager and to ask that you use some of that money for a position or some money for signs or equipment.
So whenever you saying we were applying, you're talking to East Long Meadow, right? You're not doing the grants for Long Meadow?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, not really.
No. Where does our garbage get shipped to? Is it Ohio, New York?
Uh, I don't know where waste management. I think New York, Casella brings it to Freshkeels, New York.
And Casella, I think goes to Ohio too, they take, I know upstate Mass, they go to Ohio.
Yeah, I just did a presentation for that, and so it's four hundred and fifty miles. They charge us for diesel, so it ends up being like seven thousand dollars for a trip, including the cost of the trash.
Yeah, that, in that, that club would be a great one to start with, just to know that side of it. And then if they get overflowed and they just burn it? So I know that's completely against what you would.
Well, no, there's, there's nowhere to burn it anymore.
So they, well, don't they still do the one out in, you know, Central, I thought they still did that?
Oh, in Central Mass? Yeah, but they, like, they're not accepting new clients.
Got it, got it. That's a great thing for them to learn, is that a lot of people think the trash still goes over in West Side, and it just doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't go down into Hartford, it goes to Ohio, in cases of upstate New York. So it's a very interesting, you know, supply chain. Call it a supply chain, because you're supplying garbage.
And Republic puts it on trains to go to Alabama.
Yeah.
So this, the composting would go to the facility that's in Connecticut? Do they work with a lot of municipality, school districts? What happens?
The, the composting hauler that we work with, they're out of Ludlow, they're kind of, they've been just doing it for a couple of years. They're kind of, they've been just doing it for a couple of years. They're trying to pick up more residential. That's something that our town could always look at as well. But I think they're starting to work with Ludlow school system or town, so. Yeah. That, I mean, they use the Ellington just because I think it's free to dump the compost there.
And is Long Meadow going to this half-ton restriction as well, or is that a Massachusetts?
It's a Massachusetts law.
So we are, okay. So we will be subject to that eventually then? Okay.
Other questions and thoughts?
Well, if you have any other questions, please reach out, and, and if you need any help, you know, like planning or anything like that, I'm here, okay?
Thank you so much for coming out.
You've logged some time in this meeting room.
All right, we're moving on then to other reports. School committee chair report, I have none. I think everybody's heard plenty from me at this point tonight. Superintendent Support, do you have anything?
I have a very lengthy report for you. I'll spare you any more of my comments.
Student rep report, Andrew, also thank you for hanging in here for so long tonight.
I was trying to keep this quick as I can. Just want to give a good luck to all of our student athletes who are going to participate in the MIA's tournament from across all of our athletic teams. Just that it's very awesome. They're talent, and I think I just want to put some emphasis on that. And then last Sunday, the LHS Key Club had their winter festival. This included games, crafts, and treats for younger members of our community, usually elementary age. This took place in the cafeteria. It was just a really awesome event. I didn't get to go due to an indoor track meet, but I saw plenty of pictures, and it looked like all the students had a lot of fun running the events, and our, and the younger kids looked like they had a great time participating. And then just a quick reminder of the student council fundraisers that are coming up. Red Robin and Enfield is on February 15th. Frankie's Pizza is February 20th, Batch on February 28th, and DePaul Lady's Long Meadow on March 3rd. So thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. LPVUC?
Our next meeting is on February 14th.
All right. Energy and Sustainability?
We just had a great meeting on composting, a representation to the school committees, so we're going to move forward from there.
All right. Seal?
Just that there's a date change in the next presentation by the Federation of Children with Special Needs. It was supposed to be this upcoming Wednesday, February the 14th, but it will be February 28th at 7:00 PM, and it's on the 504.
All right. Wonderful. Middle School Building Committee, we don't have anything new right now, but next week's meeting, we will have some updates. We have designer selection interviews scheduled for next Tuesday. Nothing else that I've forgotten there, correct?
That's it. Meeting on the 14th. Yeah.
Yes. Oh, that's right. Yes. Middle School Building Committee meeting on the 14th. All right. Subcommittee Finance, there is nothing, no report. Policy Sub, Michaela?
The following policies remain posted for public input. Policy IG Curriculum Development, Policy IGA slash IGD Curriculum Development and Adoption, and Policy IGB Support Services Programs.
All right, thank you.
Good. And, or, we met yesterday. Was it yesterday? It feels like a year ago. Looking at advertising on school grounds, the committee's donations policy, and one other item that escapes me. But we heard a presentation from Bill Welch around his interest in opening up advertising on school grounds as a revenue source.
And any update or recommendation on that just yet, or still to be discussed?
It was a first-time discussion, and it was interesting to hear about. And we just had follow-up questions about, you know, hearing from other districts that do it, and what some policies might look like.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. No other Subcommittee Reports, no ongoing business or new business, which means we have one motion remaining in front of us tonight.
I move on the, I move on that the school committee adjourn the February 6th, 2024 school committee meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Adam?
Yay.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Is Julie still with us? Yes. Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. We are adjourned. We will see everyone again here next week.
In one week's time.
Yes.